councillors all rise. Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness, in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? Councillors.
Thanks very much Deputy Chair. I wish to advise that councillors Griffiths, Sri Ranganathan and Johnston will be aware today and move that they be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting.
Seconded.
Moved by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Cook, that councillors Griffiths, Johnston and Sri Ranganathan be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor, motion of condolence please.
Thank you, thank you Mr Chair. Before proceeding with the formal business of the day, I would like to pay tribute to former Alderman Francis Joseph St Leger, who was known as Joe. I therefore move that this council extend its sincerest and deepest sympathies to the family and friends of the late Francis St Leger and pay tribute to him for his dedicated service to the city and the people of Brisbane.
Seconded.
Thank you Lord Mayor. Please invite you to speak.
Thank you Mr Chair. Excuse me. Today, we take a moment to pay tribute to a former Alderman, as councillors were previously known, of this place, Francis Joseph St Leger, as I said affectionately known as Joe. We received notification recently that Joe had passed away earlier this month at 88 years of age. Joe was a Labor councillor. He was first elected in 1979 and served in the council until the year 1991, a total of 12 years as an Alderman. Joe started his career representing the Ward of Central City and in 1985, this ward was abolished and became the Paddington Ward, one Mr Chair that you would be very familiar with, an area he represented until his retirement in 1991, the same year that Lord Mayor Jim Sawley took the mayoralty. In the same election, he handed over the ward to Helen Abrahams, who we know as a former councillor. And at the time of his passing, Joe was living in Red Hill, remaining part of the area that he so dutifully served as an Alderman. Joe's daughter has provided some information to councillor Maddick on some of his service and obviously, as councillor Maddick is in the chair, he can't participate in this debate. So he's asked me to relay some of this information on his behalf as the local councillor for Paddington Ward. Of Joe's 12 years in council, he served in cabinet for six of those years and was chair of the works committee and as well as the planning and traffic committee. From a local perspective, Joe was responsible for setting up the Paddington Meals on Wheels. And councillor Maddick tells me that Joe's daughter is someone who has taken a leaf out of Joe's book and continues to serve the community in that organisation that her dad created. Joe was also involved in the creation of the Red Hill Paddington Community Centre, a centre which later became Communify, an organisation that you would all be aware of. Since its inception, Communify has gone from strength to strength. It now supports several thousand customers across the inner west, the CBD and the New Farm areas and council works very closely with Communify in supporting the residents of Brisbane. I understand that Joe was receiving home care services from Communify in his final years, which is a wonderful example of the legacy that he helped create and the full circle at work here. As Chair of the Planning and Traffic Committee, it was the infamous demolition of the Bellevue Hotel in 1979 that caused Joe to make some serious reforms when it came to heritage in Brisbane and we are grateful that he did. In 1979, there were no rules or protections for heritage buildings in Brisbane and we saw a great amount of our city's history lost in the years leading up to that point. And so after significant research and policy development, Joe established the Heritage Buildings Advisory Committee in 1981, as well as putting forward the idea of local plans in Brisbane. So we had a town plan, but this was the first occasion of local plans being proposed, which I'm sure everyone would agree was a good planning reform. Also advised that he was part of the team that worked to create the Queen Street Mall as we know it today and that was a project that was done in the lead up to the 1982 Commonwealth Games as a legacy project for that event. Brisbane's first local plan was in Spring Hill and there were later audits of Brisbane's historical suburbs like Petrie Terrace. Plans were developed in New Farm, Newstead and Tenerife as a result of the new local planning push. Seventy per cent of Petrie Terrace's houses were built before the year 1930, so it was essential that these tin and timber cottages remain protected for years to come and so they are today. Joe was quoted in the Courier Mail in 1982 as saying, "The Heritage Building Advisory Committee would avoid choosing only the most attractive, ornate or the largest, most dominant buildings." Excuse me. "We want to identify a diversity of buildings, vegetation and other items that typify the past as the essence of Brisbane's character. The retention of the last surviving single-storey cottage in Brisbane's central city may be considered just as important as the retention of a larger, more imposing building." So that was the councillor's comments in the Courier Mail about the need to protect all types of buildings, whether they were big and impressive or ornate or whether it was a simple workers' cottage. And we see the legacy that has been left by the foresight of Joe and we are all grateful for that legacy. Preserving those tin and timber cottages, they may not have been the most impressive buildings, but our history is the richer for those buildings remaining to exist in Brisbane. I know Joe's daughter Karen gets on well with councillor Maddick and the ward staff and appreciate the work that councillor Maddick does for his community and Joe was truly an old school politician, one who strongly believed in his party's values but at the same time gave credit where credit was due for hardworking local members. On behalf of my team, I want to extend our thoughts and prayers to Joe St Leger's family and friends. Thank you Mr Chair.
Thank you Lord Mayor. Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Deputy Chair. Francis Joseph St Leger or Joe St Leger led a life dedicated to service community and his family. His tireless work on Brisbane's inner north side, both before and after his time as Alderman has left a legacy that residents will enjoy for generations to come. Born in Spring Hill, Brisbane, March 16, 1934, to Frank and Eileen St Leger, Joe grew up in a big Catholic family with six siblings, all sisters. As he was raised in his working class family, Joe quickly learnt the value of community and working towards a fair go for all. Joe's career took him from apprenticeships to working in the railways to a business manager and then of course into politics here in council. In 1979, Joe St Leger was elected as the Alderman for the Brisbane Ward and during his time in council, served on numerous committees as we've heard, most notably as the Chair of the Traffic Planning and Works Committee for many years. He was also the Chair of the Brisbane Heritage Building Advisory Committee and fought fiercely to save the history of Brisbane and often engaged in heated debates with Premier Joe Bielke Peterson. Courier Mail article from the 18th of November 1982 said, "The two Joes were as different as shattered fire bro and broken brick." He went on to say that to Premier Joe, said, "A building is a structure on a piece of land to serve a purpose and create a profit." Whereas to Alderman Joe, "Brisbane is a home and its buildings monuments to how the city came to be what it is." It's clear that he didn't shy away from the hard work that went into preserving some of the treasures of our city as we've heard, its landmark buildings and its beautiful inner-city Queenslanders. One of Brisbane's iconic landmarks that unfortunately didn't survive, the Joe Bielke Peterson warpath on heritage, was the Cloudland Dance Hall, which was demolished 40 years ago this month without permit. Like many Brisbane residents, Cloudland is where Joe met the love of his life, Rita. The two were married in 1956 and were inseparable up until Rita's passing in 2019. Joe and Rita were a couple so ingrained in their inner Brisbane community and the legacy they have left will survive for generations. Together, they started the Paddington Meals on Wheels with Rita as the very first cook, the Red Hill Paddington Community Centre now known as Communify and through their local Labor Party branch, they set up the Caxton Street Community Centre. Joe served as Alderman for 12 years, finishing up in 1991 as we've heard. I want to acknowledge Joe St Leger's commitment to serving our city, its people and his dedication to the great Australian Labor Party. As we know, 1991 was a year that ushered in great progressive change in Brisbane with the election of the Sawley administration. There is no doubt that Joe St Leger's great work in council for his time and within the Labor Party helped lay the foundations for this change that our city is still benefiting from today. Our thoughts are with the St Leger family, including Joe's six children, Peter, Danny, Colleen, Susan, Karen and Brendan, 11 grandchildren and five great grandchildren, as well as the community in which he had been so entrenched for most of his life. Thank you Joe St Leger.
Thank you councillor, further debate? No further debate, Lord Mayor? I'll now put the motion. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. We'll now move on to the confirmation of the previous minutes. Confirmation of minutes please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,696th meeting held on Tuesday the 15th of November 2022 be received, taken as read and confirmed. Seconded.
Moved by councillor Landers, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the minutes of the 4,696th meeting of council, held on Tuesday the 15th of November 2022, be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Before we get to question time, I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome to City Hall and to the gallery, the school captains and deputy principal of Fernie Grove State School. Welcome and thank you for your interest. We'll now move on to question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a civic cabinet chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Mackay.
Thank you Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, Brisbane continues to reach new and exciting milestones as we work hard to keep our city clean, green and sustainable. Could you please update the chamber on your recent efforts in showcasing Brisbane's environmental credentials to the world, including how the Shuna Council continues to lead the nation in carbon emissions reduction?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you Mr Chair and thank you councillor Mackay for the question. I know that this is an issue that you are personally passionate about and I know that also so many of your residents are passionate about in the Walter Taylor Award. As councillors are aware, on behalf of the city, I attended the UN's Climate Change Conference, COP27, last week, representing the city. And I must admit, I wasn't sure what to expect of this event. It's not something that the city has ever been involved with before, but it's something that we all hear about in the media and generates a significant amount of interest and debate. A lot of the focus in that media attention is what nations are doing when it comes to either setting targets for emission reductions or for actions on climate change at the national level. But it was interesting to see a lot of the discussion that happened at that conference was about how cities can play an important role in delivering those results. Nation-states can set targets, but who delivers the action on the ground? Often it's the cities and the local councils that help deliver those outcomes and that was a very clear theme from the conference. And it was an honour that Brisbane was in fact the only council in Australia to be invited officially by the UN to participate in this conference. There are 500 local governments in Australia and only one was invited by the UN to be part of this conference. And that was something that struck me as well. There was a lot of talk about the involvement of local governance cities, but not a great deal of participation at that local government level. I was joined though on the official Australian delegation by the Lord Mayor of Hobart, Anna Reynolds, but she was there in her capacity and her role with ICLEI. Many of you would know ICLEI as a group of councils internationally that are very serious about taking real action on climate change. And so it was just councillor Reynolds and myself there, but we saw a great deal of discussion and enthusiasm for the work that Brisbane City Council had done. Now obviously, a focus was at the lead up to the Olympics and what we're doing the lead up to the Olympics, but there was also a great deal of focus on what we've achieved to date. Now, I guess when you're, when you're involved in, I guess, climate action and the work that we've been doing day in, day out, you sort of get focused on what Brisbane's doing and maybe not a perspective on what other councils or other cities around the world are doing. And I have to say, the other thing that struck me about being there was that what Brisbane is achieving and what we have already achieved is very, very credible and progressive on a world standard. There are so many councils and so many cities around the world that have aspirations to become carbon neutral but have not yet achieved that milestone. There are so many councils and cities that talk about climate change and what they'd like to do, but when it comes to runs on the board, Brisbane has got those runs on the board but also a clear plan to build on that. Just recently in this chamber, we approved new ambitious targets to reduce our emissions. There are emissions reduction targets by 2031, 2032 and then by 2050. And so not only do we rely on being a carbon neutral council, but we want to drive down those emissions by taking practical action. That involves a whole range of initiatives that we'll be gearing up to deliver between now and 2032 and beyond. But one of the things that came out of this conference was Brisbane's acceptance into a UN Habitat Programme called the Sustainable Development Goals Cities Programme. Now this is a programme which was established in 2020 and Brisbane is now the sixth city in the world to become part of that programme and in fact the only Australian city to become part of the programme. And the UN approached us about this and they wanted us to become a benchmark council for this programme and a reason for other people to sign up as well. And so they were very much championing the role of Brisbane in taking practical action and working with us to make sure that other cities were aware of what we're doing and also become part of that programme as well. And so this is about benchmarking Brisbane's performance against the 17 Sustainable Development Goals and then us advising them, not only what we have done, but what we plan to do going forward. This is not us being told what to do by the UN, this is us telling the UN what we have done and what we plan to do and then providing some global benchmarking on that. So I'm really excited about this new programme and the opportunity for us to be part of it. We've started at the silver certification level, but I'm really keen for us to reach the gold certification level in the coming years and we're working on that programme already. But this is just another example of how Brisbane is achieving amazing things and also Brisbane is now a city that is being talked about around the world, not just because of the Olympics or the Paralympics, but because of what we are doing when it comes to our environmental agenda.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Deputy Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, it's been reported that LMP councillor James Mackay spent more than $30,000 of ratepayer funds on self-promotion and advertising covered with his face and name in one year. He was famously forced to remove his name from stickers he had plastered all over local footpaths, but that is just the tip of the iceberg. He's now been caught asking schools to junk banners so they can include him on them. Do you think the ratepayers of Brisbane think this is good value for money?
Lord Mayor.
Well Mr Chair, that's an interesting question from a person that sent out a newsletter with seven photos of himself on it just recently, the king of self-promotion in the Deegan Ward. It is quite clear that there's some double standards here because it's okay to spend over $1,000 on camera equipment, which councillor Cassidy did, camera equipment so that his mug, his mug can be on more things, but apparently if someone from a different political party does the same thing, then it is somehow a problem. And so we, we see the same thing from a councillor who has the Jared Cassidy Award at local schools and puts his name and photo on trophies to hand out. And that's over and above the seven photographs in the recent newsletter. So what we see here is rank hypocrisy from the Labor Party. This is the same type of hypocrisy where they claim that living in Brisbane is somehow a problem when they started the Living in Brisbane publication and they were the first ones to put a Lord Mayor's photo on Living in Brisbane. And they were also the same party that had political media releases produced in Living in Brisbane, remember that? It was literally, it was literally Labor Party media releases were being published in Living in Brisbane.
Lord Mayor, there's a point of order. Point of order councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, on relevance, this is a nice story, but my question was about the $30,000 that councillor Mackay had spent on advertising and whether the Lord Mayor thought this was good value for money.
Councillor Cassidy, Lord Mayor's only just started and he still has a few minutes to speak. Lord Mayor, if you could return to the question please.
Sorry, I didn't hear the question because the deputy mayor was talking to me.
The point of order from councillor Cassidy was that you return to the question.
That's, that's fine. And so what we see here is councillors doing what they should be doing as local councillors, getting out there, engaging with the community, making sure that they support the community. And I can tell you, there are, there are very few more passionate advocates for their community than councils like councillor Mackay. And he genuinely cares for his community. He is a very hands-on councillor when it comes to the role and good on him for being such an active local councillor. We know that, we know that the community appreciates the work that councillor Mackay is doing and we know that he is all over local issues and very active and involved in his community. And so I simply want to commend councillor Mackay for being a very proactive councillor. Keep up the good work in supporting your community and I want to condemn Labor councils for being rank hypocrites on this issue.
Further questions? Councillor Landers.
My question is the Chair of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, last week, the Queensland Government announced the recipients of their Recovery and Resilience Grants Programme. Could you please update the chamber on how the Shuna Council is working with the state to help our city rebuild and recover?
Thank you councillor Howard.
Thank you Mr Deputy Chair and I thank councillor, through you, I thank councillor Landers for the question and her interest in the recovery of our sporting and community clubs. It goes without saying that Brisbane's valued community organisations have been through a challenging past three years, beginning with the onset of COVID-19 and now with many continuing their recovery efforts after the February 2022 floods. While a tremendous amount of work has already gone into supporting our sporting and community organisations after the floods, we know that a significant amount of work is still ahead of us to develop stronger and more resilient community organisations. And that's why it gives me great pleasure to highlight a significant milestone in this journey to the chamber, which was the state government's recently announced allocation of funding under the Community and Recreational Assets Recovery and Resilience Programme. After council submitted its expression of interest in this programme in July, we were grateful to learn on Thursday last week that a significant amount of funding had been committed to undertaking these works across Brisbane. Every level of government has a stake in ensuring local communities are active and engaged, which is why we are very happy to hear that the Queensland State Government has allocated council $22,773,601 to undertake recovery and resilience works across more than 30 community sites in Brisbane. These works will also see council contribute a significant amount of funding to go towards these flood recovery works, with Brisbane City Council co-contributing close to $10.5 million in funding. We know that this combined total of more than $32 million will go a very long way in the rebuild and recovery efforts of our community organisations and we are very supportive of this collaborative approach across different levels of government. I'd like to take this moment to update the chamber on some of the indicative works that this funding will go towards across Brisbane. In the coming few months, significant building repairs to structures will take place to improve 20 flood damaged community facilities with a further four sites being approved for full or partial rebuild and seven field rebuilds are set to take place at some of the most flood affected sites in Brisbane, with more than 50 sites identified to receive additional field remediation works. Again, the confirmation of this funding represents a significant milestone in the recovery of our sporting and community assets, which is set to benefit many groups across the city. Of particular note, I'd like to raise work set to take place at Brothers St Brendan's Football Club, who was severely impacted as a result of the floods. Earlier this year, I visited the site with councillor Griffiths, with members of St Brendan's Football Club to assess the damage to the site, with floodwaters entering the building and rising to the ceiling of the lower levels of the clubhouse and change rooms. Through this funding, works on the site will begin with the demolition of the old change rooms, followed by a roof replacement and building strip out of the existing clubhouse. Council will then begin work to install a flood resilient fit out in the clubhouse, including the canteen, public toilets, office and function space. These upgrades will ensure that the clubhouse becomes compliant with both the Disability Discrimination Act and with Queensland Rugby League standards, allowing the club to enter into sub-user agreements on the site. These works will also remove an internal box gutter and create an alfresco area looking over the fields, creating more vibrant meeting space to be used by members of the club and community. With these works, we can expect to see the reactivation of a much-loved site by the local community and put the club in an even better position to respond to severe weather and flooding events in the future. I'm also very happy to announce to the chamber that a number of community organisations submitted their own applications to the state government earlier this year, leading towards an additional $14 million going towards flood recovery works at over 30 council leased sites in Brisbane. I know that a lot of these sporting and community groups were assisted by council's Community Grant Support Programme to prepare their submissions, which was an initiative that council introduced to further support community organisations after the February 2022 floods. From here, council will wait and work with the Department of Tourism, Innovation and Sport and the establishment of funding agreements to deliver the works to the nominated sites. In closing, I do want to take this opportunity to thank all of the officers within the healthy and vibrant communities team for the remarkable way in which they have supported community groups in the response and recovery to the 2022 floods. I fully recognise that all parts of this team have been in one way or another involved in flood recovery efforts, either by directly supporting and liaising with our community lessees or through the creation of recovery support programmes. It really has been a massive effort over the past couple of months and the announcement of this allocation of funding will build upon.
Councillor Howard, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Cook.
Thank you. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, on your watch, we have lost Brisbane's iconic wooden ferries after their fire sale in recent weeks at bargain basement prices, which today we've found you want to keep a secret. One pleased buyer was quoted in the press as saying of his purchase, "She's probably worth twice that because she's in such good condition." On top of this, the $4 million which you were due to receive from Transdev has never been accounted for. Norman Park resident Luke Fulton, who is legally blind, who you've heard about before in this place, along with hundreds of other local residents, have been left high and dry with no ferry services at all. If this was the private sector, you would be sacked. Will you now apologise to the people of Brisbane for your complete incompetence, mismanagement and loss of public assets?
Lord Mayor.
Certainly happy to, to support the people of Brisbane with better transport services and more investment in public transport and certainly happy to keep unsafe old ferries that should not be on the river off the river, because to have them on the river would be putting. Because to have them on the river would be putting people's lives at risk, and we're not prepared to do that. And so certainly, we support people having better public transport. We support more investment in terms of funding for public transport. And we support improvements to services that people actually use. Now, the service that councillor Cook keeps talking about was a one that had such poor patronage that even the Labour Party threatened to cancel it. And they cancelled it once before, and then reinstated it, and then threatened to cancel it again. But we did what needed to be done. We kept the people of Brisbane safe, the people of Norman Park safe. But we also made sure that the funding from this service could be redirected to areas where people actually use the ferries. Now, what was the average patronage per trip councillor Murphy? It was one person per trip on average. And so one person per trip, one person per trip was taking the Norman Park ferry. And.
Councillors, please, Lord Mayor.
And if that is something that councillor Cook thinks is a good use of ratepayers' money, then heaven help us if Labour councillors ever get into office, because that is a sheer waste of ratepayers' money when there is great demand for services where people actually use them. Now, look, if people want a private water taxi, then they can pay for a private water taxi. But we are about investing in public transport as a service that people actually use. And so that's what we're doing. No administration has ever invested more in public transport than what we are investing and what we plan to invest, because we believe fundamentally in the importance of better public transport. It's a key part of our agenda. And we also understand the importance of making sure that where a service is not being used, that funding is redirected to areas where it's really needed. And that's what we'll continue to do. And we're making sure that increased levels of funding go to the areas where they are really needed. And we will continue to advocate on behalf of the people of Brisbane and provide better public transport services where they are most needed.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions, councillor Hutton.
Thank you Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, this year's Christmas in Brisbane programme has officially launched. Can you please update the chamber on what residents can expect to see this year, including how the Shuna Council is creating more to see and do this Christmas season?
Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Mr Acting Chair. I thank councillor Hutton for the question because it absolutely is that, it's the season, it's starting. And we don't have Thanksgiving here in Australia, and I say yet because Halloween really does seem to be taking over. But we definitely have Black Friday. And if you go through the city now, you can see that the countdown is on to Christmas. And if nothing else, everybody is seriously considering the Christmas shopping in the next few days and getting ready for the calendar of festive events that we have got organised right through the city and South Bank over the coming month. Night markets, open-air cinemas, the lighting of the Christmas tree, the Lord Mayor's Christmas carols and the nightly light shows at City Hall. Between now and Christmas, there is so much to see and do. And we are trying to encourage people to come into the CBD and South Bank, make sure they support the local traders when they are filling their Christmas list as well. So we're kicking it off this Friday night, Lord Mayor, as you light the Christmas tree here in King George Square. It is 22 metres high, you'll see it's already up. The official duties to switch the lights on, I think, are around 6.30. And this is a favourite and longstanding tradition for so many families in Brisbane. They are going to be turned on on the same day as Black Friday shopping, which is always a bonanza now, online and in store throughout the CBD. And just in case there wasn't enough people in town, it's also the night the Enchanted Gardens open up. So councillors, be sure you're in early in your car parks on Friday, because there won't be many left in KGS. What we would like everybody to do is to come in, grab a bite and make a night of it as well. We do do it a little bit differently to the traditional white that we see around the world. So it's about coming out and enjoying our beautiful first day of summer, or first weekend nearly of summer weather that we're heading into, hopefully a little bit cooler over the weekend as well. There's Christmas markets popping up over at South Bank more regularly as well as here. And we do such a make-a-market so well that you can find the perfect gift for everybody as well. The Brisbane Twilight Markets are bumping in from Friday the 2nd of December over the weekend. The Brisbane Arcade Markets are on the 2nd and 3rd, which is next, not this weekend, but the weekend after as well. We've got our favourite Christmas specials on City Hall, something very, very special this year, with Santa's reindeer saving Christmas and being narrated by our own Kate Campbell as well, something that parents of young children never, ever miss as well. They will run from the 9th of December through to Christmas, 7.30pm to midnight. As I mentioned, Enchanted Gardens, 22,000 square metres of custom-made lighting, audio, special effects and never-before-seen interactive projections and hologram displays start to the public on Friday night. Due to its very, very popular demand, it is a ticketed event, very minimal cost, but ticketed, so people are not disappointed and waiting for hours. Nightly shows kick off from the 25th through to the 21st of December. Not to be the bearer of bad news, but the early sessions have sold out. And I understand that the Lord Mayor's Christmas carols sold out within two and a half hours of going on sale. So if you didn't get your tickets for that, I'm sorry, but there's apparently about 9,000 people who love tickets to that and they got in very, very early. It'll be on TV as well, twice, so that's the great thing, you can still catch up with it as well. But don't forget about South Bank, there is movies over there, there is pop-up markets, pop-up bars, Christmas shows for the family right throughout the parklands over this festive season. Little Stanley Street lawn from 4 to 8 every evening, there is free kids' activities and daily markets from 10 till 9. The festive flicks will be screening from the 17th to the 22nd at River Key, and that is a spectacular open-air cinema there, just where that, underneath the Goodwill Bridge as well. As I mentioned, the Lord Mayor's Christmas carols on the 10th of December, it is going to be a fantastic two-hour spectacle, but they will be broadcast on Friday the 16th of December and again on Christmas morning in their full entirety if you haven't gotten a ticket. The Christmas carols are proudly supporting the Lord Mayor's charitable trust as they always do, and grassroots charities right across Brisbane to make sure that every stocking is filled up this year and families from everywhere can enjoy some festive cheer as well. I please encourage everybody to get out and about this Christmas, Black Friday and everything in between. Shop in store, visit the markets, grab a bite to eat, help make Christmas extra-special for our local Brisbane businesses who have done it tough and deserve a little bit of Christmas cheer themselves. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Further questions, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Deputy Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, on your watch, the Brisbane Metro has blown out from $944 million to $1.7 billion now. You spent millions on advertising the project on TV and on radio, and you've wasted $64,000 on promotional materials for the metro like pens and bags. Worse still, you spend more than $700,000 of residents' money on an inner-city display showroom that has barely had three people an hour through the doors since it's opened. A simple question, Lord Mayor, yes or no, do you think spending millions on promoting an inner-city project is good use of residents' money?
Lord Mayor.
We have more people in the Metro Information Centre than ever took the Norman Park ferry. So yes, it is a good investment because we know that the thing that our city needs as it grows is mass transit capability. And Brisbane Metro provides, in its first stage, a trunk route which will carry next-level numbers of people on Metro Route 1 and 2, but also is the technology that can be expanded to other areas of the city, places like Chermside, places like Carrendale and even beyond to Kapalabar, places like the Brisbane Airport. And there are other opportunities for expansion. It is technology that can be expanded as our city grows. And so we are committed to investing in public transport that meets the needs of our city as it grows. Now, from a, from a person who puts his own name on bags and paraphernalia and newsletters with seven photos in, once again, rank hypocrisy. And we know all of the members of his team do the same thing when it comes to promoting themselves and putting names on various bags and pens and all types of things like that. And.
One moment, Lord Mayor, please, councillors, please, let's just hear the Lord Mayor's answer in silence, please.
And while, and while Labour councillors love to promote themselves, we're promoting a transformative project that is going to change the way people move around the city. And it is a project that now has the support of the Labour Federal Government, the Labour State Government, together with our council. And so councillor Cassidy can continue to criticise this project, but everyone else is on board except him. Everyone else. The Labour Federal Government is on board, the Labour State Government is on board. And they believe in the project because they know that Brisbane will not be able to move people around effectively as it grows without Brisbane Metro. And it was interesting, when, when we saw the creation of the city deal early this year, we saw a last-minute addition to that city deal with the creation of a Woolongaba Metro station. Now, some people would see this as rather ironic because our original metro project, which was a very different project, included a Woolongaba Metro station. And that was where we were going to base the metro vehicles, that was where we would have not only a station but a stabling depot. But what stopped us from doing that? The state government. They said, "No, no, no, stay away from Woolongaba. We want this site in its entirety for Cross River Rail and for building, buildings." And so we listened to their advice and we agreed to delete the metro from Woolongaba at their request. And where do you think the addition of the metro station at Woolongaba came from? It was at the state government's request. And so what had happened is very clear. They had seen all the benefits of the metro project, they had seen what they were planning with Cross River Rail, and they knew that they needed a metro station at the Gabbah to make Brisbane's transport system work in the lead-up to the 2032 Olympics. And so they asked for that station to be put in. It was completely unexpected for us because we had been told no not too long in the past about the Woolongaba Metro station. So was it a surprise? Yes. Was it a pleasant surprise? Absolutely. Are we grateful? Yes. We're super excited that the state government believes so strongly in the metro that they asked for a Woolongaba Metro station to be added into the project. And so when councillor Cassidy criticises Brisbane Metro, he is a lone voice and he is just outing himself as someone who is bitter and twisted and is putting up opposition for opposition's sake. The Labour State Government, the Labour Federal Government know the benefits of this project. It's about time councillor Cassidy got on board.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further questions, councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. My question is to the Chair of City Standards, councillor Marks. Councillor Marks, the Shuna Council's Waste Smart Awards were recently held, showcasing those who are keeping Brisbane clean and green. Could you please update the chamber on the outcomes of this award tonight?
Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. And through you, I thank councillor Toomey for the question. Sustainability continues to be at the front of mind for the Shuna Council, Mr Deputy Chair. And on Thursday last week, we gathered at the Waste Smart Awards to recognise the achievements of those who go above and beyond to prevent or reduce waste to landfill, increase resource recovery and help preserve Brisbane's natural environment. Now, in their sixth year, the Waste Smart Brisbane Awards recognise individuals, community groups, schools, early learning centres and businesses making incredible efforts to minimise waste and reduce the number of items that land in landfill. So this year, there were nine award categories, 12 different awards and a prize pool of more than $4,000, as well as a new category, the All-Star Waste Smart Award, which recognises outstanding long-term commitment to waste prevention. I also want to take the moment to congratulate and thank all the councillors that took the time out of their days to attend those awards. If I name, start naming, I'm going to miss somebody, but I know there was a few of you all there. Anyway, thank you. And also want to share with the chamber today a little snippet of our award winners and the amazing work they do in the community. So a gentleman by the name of Peter Garland won the Councillor's Choice Award category for his work with local optometrists and other shops that sell glasses in the southwestern suburbs, including Sherwood, Kenmore and Oxley. So he's created these drop-off boxes and he collects them on a regular basis to ensure that those glasses don't go to landfill. He's collected and packed over 10,000 pairs of glasses over the last financial year. He then sends them on to the Lions Warehouse in Clontoff to be cleaned, graded, packed and recycled, which then go into vulnerable communities in Australia and overseas to the Lions International Recycle For Site Programme. I think as all councillors, we potentially have a little stash of glasses somewhere that we put away. One day, we're going to hand it over to our Lions clubs to, to send on, but this guy's actually walking the walks and I think he needs to be congratulated. The Champions Award went to Danielle Munro, who has spent the past 80 months working on a new programme called CircMed, which diverts hospital and the healthcare sectors' used plastics from landfill back into the circular economy. So in the past financial year, CircMed has diverted over seven tonnes of plastic waste, which is the equivalent of an army truck from landfill just from St Andrews War Memorial Hospital. So Mount Gravate State High won the People's Choice Award, and I'm sure councillor Adams will talk more on them later. And the All-Star Award went to Renee McBrien, and I think it's important, Chair, to mention the volume of items that have been diverted from landfill due to her work. And I know also councillor Adams will also potentially mention Renee as well. So just a few stats, 14,850 kilos of organic waste, 920 kilos of bottle-top lids, 1,988 kilos of PVC, 515 kilos of metal tag. This is a good one. You know the little bread tags that some of the breads people still sell with the plastic? Some of them are changing to cardboard, but most of them are still plastic. And again, I've got a little dish at home that I store mine in that I need to get to somewhere. 180 kilos of bread tags, that is astonishing. And then obviously the repurposing with fishing rods, yes, a lot of carbs, you're right, councillor Murphy. Hand reels and also tackle boxes which go to Tongan villages. Mr Chair, I would like to keep talking about the winners and their achievements because it's just fantastic, the creativity and the passion that you see in each person you met at the awards. But I'm sure, as I said, many local councillors were there, they will be talking about their own individual winners from their own wards as well, I'm sure. We also recognise, we started a new thing called the Waste Smart Games. This was a new category that the WARS team came up with, and I was delighted that the Lord Mayor was happy to support that. All the funding for those was sponsored by Cleanaway, which was another great initiative from our partners in that space. They were, we had 17 schools participate in that programme, which is not a lot at this point in time. However, it was a first-time programme, so I need to make sure that the councillors for next year know that this is going to be an ongoing programme and that hopefully we can get more schools on board with entering that award. So there was three awards, first, second and third, and I know that councillor Adams is going to get up and brag again, but she, her school, Holland Park State School won the inaugural Waste Smart Games. Payne Road State School, which I'm understanding is councillor Toomey, your award, you won second place. And third place went to Mount Gravate State High School. So yes, councillor Adams can take out some honours on that. So I want to congratulate and extend my congratulations to all the winners across the nine categories. The calumny of the anomalies this year was incredible, with so many outstanding submissions, and it's truly inspiring to see so many people committed to building a better Brisbane. Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair.
Further questions, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Deputy Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, with news that ratepayers have spent $6 million on buying carbon credits, including from projects in China and India, why does council not tap into the environmental and economic phenomenon, which is FOGO, in its bid to become truly carbon-neutral? The single biggest thing a council can do to reduce carbon emissions and become really carbon-neutral is remove organic material from landfill instead of buying carbon credits. Don't you think that $6 million would be better off spent on establishing a full FOGO system here in Brisbane?
Lord Mayor.
Well, as councillor Cassidy well knows, we are absolutely committed to establishing a full FOGO system in Brisbane. And it's a project that we've been working on for quite some time now. As part of our plans to roll out FOGO, we already have 6,000 households that are part of a pilot programme that can use their green top bin to put, to put food scraps, in particular vegetable scraps, in their green top bin. And this is part of gearing up our capability for. And this is part of gearing up our capability for increased use. Now, we know, and we had it confirmed recently, that Labor's plan is to reduce the red top collection, i.e. the weekly waste service that people get, to fortnightly. The red top bin would go fortnightly under Labor's plan. They want to reduce a service, a basic service, which is collecting the rubbish, and replace it with a green bin service on a weekly basis. And councillor Cassidy is asking, what would we do? I'll tell you what, we'll do something in a measured way based on a pilot programme and determining what we learn from this pilot programme. And so...
Councillors, please. Councillor Strunk. Lord Mayor?
And so as part of our initiatives and working together with South East Queensland councils, we're gearing up our capability in the region to offer FOGO services that don't rob people of their weekly waste collection. Because that is the reality. Labor wants to cut waste collection services. Labor wants to cut waste collection services. They want to reduce the red top collection to fortnightly. Now, as a...
Councillors, please. Lord Mayor, just one moment, please. Lord Mayor, just one moment, please. Councillors, please. Councillor Cassidy, councillors, please. We know the meetings rules around unsuitable conduct and accusing councillors of being liars. And I ask that you please restrain yourselves from that kind of behaviour. There is other ways to express yourselves when you have the moment to speak, either in a question or in general business. Lord Mayor?
So it was interesting because the other week, when this issue was raised, I pointed out that their proposal involved cutting back on the red top bin collection to fortnightly. And he was yelling out in the chamber, what's your alternative? So he accepted that he was going to do that. That was part of his plan. And now he's accusing me of lying. So who's the liar here? The reality is, their plan involves cutting back a basic service that the people of Brisbane rely on. Their plan involves... Now, how many households have bins that are filled up every week? The red top bin? With what? With what? Well, let me talk about... Point of order, Chair.
Point of order.
Irrespective of the lying, I would ask for your ruling on just the repeated screaming coming from over there. To the Lord Mayor, is that an act of disorder and what should we do about that act of disorder, Chair?
Councillor Murphy, can I just say that this obviously is a place of great debate and on a passion issue, and I appreciate that councillors can be vocal on these things. But we do need to be able to allow the speaker to be heard. And so I ask all councillors to tone it down so that the Lord Mayor can continue to answer his question.
Now...
Point of order, councillor Cassidy?
Quite a serious one here. The Lord Mayor has the opportunity, if need be, to take this on notice and answer later. It's very clear that he doesn't know what FOGO is. He has no idea what FOGO is whatsoever with this rubbish we're hearing from him today. So if he needs to take the time, I'm happy for him to take that on notice and to provide an answer later.
Councillor Cassidy, I don't support your point of order. The Lord Mayor is clearly answering your question in regards to FOGO and the processes that he is undertaking through this trial. Lord Mayor?
It's quite extraordinary to see the Labor leader of the opposition or the so-called leader of the opposition stand up and suggest that we don't know what FOGO is when we have a pilot programme underway for 6,000 households, one that is expected to save 2,000 tonnes of food waste just in its pilot phase alone. And so we can see the only people confused here are the Australian Labor Party councillors who do not know what they want and do not know how they will achieve it other than cutting basic services.
Further questions? Councillor Atwood?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee, councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, the Shrima Council is committed to ensuring Brisbane remains the most small business-friendly city in Australia. Can you please update the chamber on how council's Sustainable Business Hub is supporting businesses to grow, reduce costs and operate more sustainably?
Councillor Davis?
Well, thank you very much, Deputy Chair. And through you, I thank councillor Atwood for the question because I'm very pleased to have the opportunity to talk about some of the great work that Brisbane Sustainability Agency does to assist our local businesses. Because the Shrima Council is committed to ensuring that our clean and green Brisbane remains the most small business-friendly city in Australia. We believe that the key to meaningful and effective action on climate means working with businesses and enterprise not against it. We know that businesses want to transition to more environmentally friendly behaviours and they want to do their bit to help. But many of them don't know how or they're intimidated about the costs and impacts to their businesses. That's why we've developed the Sustainable Business Hub, which is one of the many initiatives we fund to help local business grow and to succeed. The hub is delivered through the Brisbane Sustainability Agency and they are helping businesses to reduce their environmental footprint in a way that makes business sense. Mr Deputy Chair, we know that through the COVID-19 pandemic and the recent floods, that small businesses in Brisbane have been doing it tough. Nowhere is this more true than in Brisbane's vibrant hospitality and entertainment sector, where small business owners have weathered a lot of challenges over the last few years. To support them, the hub is providing practical, real-world tools to help them save on energy, water and waste costs. I know from my experience working in small business that every dollar counts. In Paddington, in your ward, Deputy Chair, local favourite Sassafras Cafe has embraced energy, waste and water-saving solutions through the Sustainable Business Hub. To improve energy efficiency, Sassafras has installed tropicalised fridges that work better in warmer environments like Brisbane's, especially in a steamy cafe kitchen. Not only does this reduce raw electricity consumption, it also means the equipment will break down less often, require fewer repairs and last longer before it needs to be replaced. All of this has benefit not just to Sassafras but to the environment as well. Deputy Chair, after living through several consecutive years of arid year events, it may be hard for some to remember a time when water in our river city was scarce. But the cycle of flooding and drought is a reality of Brisbane's climate. And that's why we're always thinking about ways to encourage water-saving behaviours across the city. Not many restaurants can get by without water and Sassafras is no exception. With a busy kitchen, outdoor courtyard dining and on-site bathrooms, water was a big cost for the cafe. In commercial kitchens, water-saving taps are not a straightforward option. Instead, Sassafras installed a DIY dripped irrigation system and water timers for around $200. This reduced their water bill by around $100 per quarter, which means not only are they saving water, the system is paying for itself and more. Sassafras has also made changes to the way they manage their food waste. By switching to commercial compost bins for as little as $8 a week, Sassafras has reduced its waste output from 10 general waste bins a week to just two, saving hundreds of kilograms of food waste from landfill as well as reducing costs by about $200 a week. That's a net saving of $192 a week on rubbish alone and that's great for the planet. But Deputy Chair, Sassafras is just one of the local businesses across Brisbane gaining benefit from the solutions offered through the Sustainable Business Hub. In fact, across the city, a broad range of venues, retailers, manufacturers and offices are embracing the hub's business energy calculator to learn more about their business and the ways they can reduce their environmental footprint. I know that the team at the Brisbane Sustainability Agency are passionate about getting businesses on board with our clean, green and sustainable priorities. So whether it's switching to green power, investing in solar power or small-scale behavioural changes such as switching off lights and computers overnight, every bit counts. So I'd like to encourage businesses to visit the Sustainable Business Hub for solutions to reduce their costs through doing business more sustainably. Thank you, Deputy Chair.
Thank you, councillor Davis. That ends question time. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report of 14 November 2022.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, 14th of November 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Moved by the Lord Mayor, seconded by the Deputy Mayor that the report of the Establishment Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, 14 November 2022, be adopted. Lord Mayor?
Mr Chair, from the outset, can I please ask that item B be taken seriatum for debate and voting and be dealt with following the other items on the agenda?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Items A, C, D, E and F.
Okay. So first of all, as I always do, I wanted to mention the lighting up of council assets. Last night, all of our assets were lit up in blue for National Asbestos Awareness Week. This awareness campaign is all about raising awareness of asbestos as well as its related diseases. We know that thousands of Australians have died as a direct result of this material and the campaign encourages everyone to protect themselves. Tonight, as well as Wednesday and Thursday night, Reddick Cliff Place, the Sandgate Town Hall, Stori Bridge, Victoria Bridge and Tropical Dome will be lit up in orange to support Zonta's Say No to Violence Against Women campaign. Zonta is run by volunteers and all of its funds raised are directed towards projects such as scholarships, refuges and as well as other support services. A group walk will also be held tonight as the bridge is lit up. On Friday night, all of our assets will be lit up in yellow to support Jared Lyle Yellow Day. And this day is about helping to raise much-needed funds for Challenge, a charity devoted to supporting children and families living with cancer. On Saturday and Sunday, our assets will be lit up in blue to support the Australian PGA Championships, which are being held here in Brisbane at the Royal Queensland Golf Club. The DP World Tour season starts this Thursday and will finish up on Sunday. International players have travelled to Brisbane to compete for the Joe Kirkwood Cup as part of this competition. And in mentioning the PGA, it was great to be out at the Royal Queensland Golf Club this morning to present the keys to the city to Cam Smith. It is the first time the keys to the city have been presented to a gent with a mullet. And I don't think it'll be the last time, though, because not only has Cam Smith inspired 1,000 kids to pick up the golf clubs, there's been 1,000 mullets inspired by Cam Smith as well. And literally being out there today, I saw mullets everywhere. So he's been a true inspiration for our city. He is the world's best golfer at the moment. He was born in Brisbane and rightly deserving of the keys to the city given his massive win at the British Open earlier this year. So thank you to Cam Smith for being part of that ceremony and graciously accepting the keys to the city. Continue doing what you're doing to inspire golfers and the next generation because we know that in 10 years' time, the Royal Queensland Golf Course will be home to the Brisbane 32 Olympics and the golf for the Olympics will be played here in Brisbane at the Royal Queensland Golf Course. And so a very exciting time for golf and it's great to see the attention of the Australian PGA here and the attention of the world on Brisbane when it comes to our sporting and golfing prowess. Also, in recent times, we have received some awards. And several weeks ago, I mentioned some of the council officers which were finalists and winners of the Aus Contact Awards for Queensland. There were three council officers who won awards at the event and they all went to the national awards, which were held last Friday night in Melbourne. I'm pleased to report that Denise Olsen was the national winner of the Customer Experience Champion Award, which is a fantastic outcome. Congratulations, Denise. So not only did Denise take out the state award, but she is number one in the nation for that category as well. So it's a fantastic achievement for Denise. And on behalf of all of us in the chamber, I want to send our congratulations to her and also every single one of our fantastic contact centre staff who do such a great job in being a first point of call for so many people that contact the Brisbane City Council. I'd like to take this opportunity to table the annual financial statements for Trade Coast Land, PTY, LTD for the year 2122, financial year. And so as is the normal process, when the statements are received, I table them in the next available ordinary council meeting. And so that is today and I table these reports in the usual way. I did want to talk now about the, I guess, the interesting few years that we've had and the culmination of challenges that our council has had and indeed the people of Brisbane, the residents and businesses of our city have had. We have had a number of years of challenges from the pandemic, which have come at an impact to our community, to business and also to all levels of government. The impact of the pandemic on our council was at least $220 million. And that is a combination of less revenue coming in but also all of the programmes that we initiated to support the community and business in that time of need. And so the first crisis, the pandemic crisis, came at an impact of $220 million to our budget. The second crisis, which we have experienced at the beginning of this year, was the flood crisis of 2022. One that we are still in the process of recovering and rebuilding from and one which has come at an impact of $330 million to the council budget. And so first the pandemic, then the flood. But now we are in the grips and suffering the impacts of a third crisis. And that third crisis is the global inflation crisis. And that inflation crisis is impacting on whether it's normal householders with their household and family budgets, whether it is business or whether it is all three levels of government. We have seen projects right across the board, both at the local level, the state level and the federal level, being impacted by major cost increases based on those global inflationary pressures. And this comes at a time when we are building more than we have ever built before. This year, this budget year, we have budgeted $1.3 billion for capital works. So that is $1.3 billion to build things. That's budgeted for this year in the council budget. And in fact, over the coming few years, so if you take this year, the next year and the following year, the total is $3.66 billion that we have budgeted for capital works. An absolute record investment in infrastructure. And we do so because our city is growing and we do so because right now we are the fastest-growing capital city in Australia. People are coming to Brisbane because they love our city, they love its lifestyle and they want a piece of this wonderful city. And we know that we have to invest in infrastructure. We know that we have to build things. And whether it's Brisbane Metro or new bridges or all of the local projects happening right across the city, massive and record investment is happening, $3.6 billion over the coming years. But like other levels of government, we have not been immune from massive inflationary pressures. We have not been immune from increases in the price of fuel, increases in the price of steel, increases in the price of timber, of bitumen, of sand, increases in the price of labour, a difficulty in getting tradespeople to do the jobs, a difficulty with construction companies that have been falling over. And in fact, people building their own home at the moment have faced residential construction pricing increases of at least 11% in the past 12 months alone. So if you're building a house, you can expect it to be at least 11% more on average than it was 12 months ago. And so everyone is feeling the pinch. And at a time when we have one crisis, a pandemic, followed by a natural disaster at a significant cost and now an inflationary crisis, which is flowing through to all parts of council and so many projects, we are under significant pressure. And so in recent weeks, I have asked the CEO of council to brief me and to brief my colleagues on the impacts on council projects and delivery. And what they have come forward is a very clear picture of significant cost increases on key projects across the city at a time when we are building major infrastructure. And so at the time when we're building the most, the prices and the costs are going up. And they are going up not because of local factors, they are going up because of national and international factors. And so I want to flag today that tomorrow, that next week... And so I want to flag today that tomorrow, that next week, we will be bringing through a budget review submission, and we will be bringing through a number of changes to projects and budgets to reflect these cost increases. And those cost increases will be significant. Of the three point six billion dollar investment in capital works-
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension?
Seconded.
Moved by the Deputy Mayor and councillor Hutton for an extension of time. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Of the three point six billion that we have budgeted for capital works over the coming years, we are expecting cost increases similar to what we're seeing with residential home building. And so we're expecting cost increases of at least eleven percent over our suite of projects over the coming few years. That figure will be in excess of four hundred million dollars extra on key projects over the coming years. That figure is something that will start to flow through this financial year, but will also continue for a number of years to come over that forward programme. So what we will see is a budget review come through next week and associated submissions to provide for these projects to happen. The decision that we have to make now is do we put the, take the foot off the accelerator? When our city is growing rapidly, when people are moving here, when we've got the twenty thirty-two Olympics coming in ten years' time, do we take the foot off the accelerator and pare back on building things? Or do we get on with the job of building for a growing city? Do we get on with the flood recovery? Do we get on with better public transport? Do we get on with investing in our suburbs right across the city? And to me, the answer is really clear. We need to get on with it. This extra cost is real. This extra cost will flow through over the coming years. But the good news, fellow councillors, is that because we have consistently provided surplus budgets, so balanced budgets with a small but reasonable surplus, and we do that to provide for a rainy day, and it has been raining. Figuratively, it has been raining for the last three years. It was raining with the pandemic. It was raining earlier this year with the floods, and now it is raining with the global inflation crisis. And so what I can tell you is that even with the impacts, and they will be significant, even with the impacts, we will retain a balanced budget. And so next week, the budget review will come through. There will be a fifty-seven point seven million dollar reduction in our surplus, but we will still be in surplus. Why? Because we did the right and responsible thing to budget for the future, to budget for unexpected shocks. It's why you have a buffer zone. It's why you budget for those unexpected things, whether they're pandemics or floods or whether they're inflation crises. So we're getting on with it. We're not taking the foot off the accelerator when it comes to Brisbane Metro, bridges, all of the investment we're making right across the city. Our city needs it. We're going to pursue it. We're going to continue the foot full on the accelerator to build the infrastructure our city needs. And so, yes, there will be a impact of around four hundred million dollars over the coming three years. But this is what we have to do to cater for the growth of our city. But also, as I said, we remain committed to running a balanced budget, and this is why we have a surplus. We have a surplus so that in times of crisis, in times of need, in challenging times, we can tap into that and we can deploy that for building the infrastructure our city needs. And so I'm just flagging to all councillors, those submissions will come through next week, the budget review will come through next week, and there will be significant cost increases in many projects right across the board. Now, I can almost hear the cynical political games that will be played by the opposition on these issues. But I would simply say, if you can put your hand on your heart and say that this is a challenge only being faced by Brisbane City Council and not by state or federal governments, then go your hardest. But if this is a challenge that's been faced by all three levels of government, by states right across the nation, by the federal government, and this is a challenge being faced in cities all around the world, then don't dare play politics with the future of our city, because we cannot afford to pare back on the infrastructure our city needs. But we must have this investment. We must cater for the growth of our city, and we will do so in a responsible way. So a flag that that's coming through next week, and I simply say, it may be tempting for Labor councillors to play politics with it, but, you know, would they play politics with a six hundred million dollar blowout on the Kumara Connector project? Would they play politics with that? I don't know, maybe? But that is the reality. One state government project has increased in cost by double all of our projects. So this is a real issue, and I actually have some sympathy for the state government in dealing with these challenges, because the challenges are real. The cost increases are real. The price of commodities are going up, whether we like it or not. It is hard to get labour. It is hard to deal with the challenges when construction companies are falling over left, right and centre. We know in recent times, we went out to tender for the Beams Road corridor upgrade, and unlike our usually highly competitive situation where multiple companies would tender for the job, we got one tenderer, one tenderer. And that tender was significantly over the budget that we had allocated. But this is the brave new world that we are in right now. And as I said, we're not prepared to take our foot off the accelerator on the things that need to be done. Item A in front of us, Mister Chair. Is my microphone on?
Yes.
Yeah. Item A in front of us is the new lease for council CBD office accommodation at Brisbane Square. We had been out for a competitive market process to gauge what other opportunities there might be for council's corporate accommodation. So this is accommodation for the many dedicated council staff that work for our organisation, supporting the community. And what it was determined through that process is that the best and most affordable option is to stay in our existing building, with obviously some refurbishments being done in Brisbane Square. Now, Brisbane Square, Brisbane-
Sorry.
Brisbane Square started off with a twenty-year lease, and that was an arrangement that was entered into by, in fact, the previous Labor administration in the early two thousands. But it is a good building. There is work being done on it. There is more work planned to bring it up to the standard that we would expect. But this is the right deal when it comes to the best value for money with office accommodation. We'll be making some changes when it comes to consolidating our office accommodation. At present, we have at least two major locations, Brisbane Square and also Green Square in Fortitude Valley. And so we're moving to consolidate Green Square into Brisbane Square going forward. Our lease on Brisbane Square was due to expire in October twenty twenty-six. The lease in Green Square expires in August twenty twenty-seven. The lease for Brisbane Square has a five-year option period to extend, which would expire in October twenty thirty-one. And strategically, to transition into new or alternative office accommodation during this period would not be sensible, particularly given the timing of this together with the twenty thirty-two Olympics. And so at the outcome, at the outset, our focus was on delivering the value for money and a good place for people in our organisation to work and do their job in the best interests of ratepayers. And so following the process that we undertook and the expression of interest to the Brisbane office market, it became clear that staying where we are and consolidating our accommodation was the right decision. So this proposal now is seeing us enter into a new lease with Brisbane Square, which would commence on the first of December this year with an expiry date well beyond the Olympics of the thirtieth of November twenty thirty-eight. And that equates to an additional lease term of just over twelve years beyond the original proposed expiry of the lease. Once approved, council arrangements with Charter Hall will be finalised, and we will commence the necessary planning over the next year to outline and support the work required to ensure Brisbane Square are well positioned to continue supporting the Brisbane community. Item C is the Operational Plan and Progress Report, the Quarterly Financial Report for September twenty twenty-two. The first budget review figures have been used for the approved annual budget for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. The Quarterly Financial Report includes the statements of comprehensive income, financial position, changes in equity and cash flows for the period ending September twenty twenty-two. First, this is the first time we've updated the report in many years to be more readable and more usable by anyone reading the report. It's been modernised, and in doing so, provides a more meaningful highlight of the work the council is doing across the different programmes and business areas. The finance chair will speak in greater detail to this report, and I didn't want to steal her thunder. Item D is the Stores Board Submission, the Significant Contracting Plan.
Your time has expired.
Move for an extension?
Seconded.
Moved by the Deputy Mayor and councillor Hutton for an extension of time. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor, and just for your information, Lord Mayor, there is an issue with the timer. You are still being recorded, but we are keeping time manually.
Okay, it seems to be working now. No, actually, it's not. That's all right. Okay, item D is Stores Board Submission for the Supply and Delivery of Electrical Fittings and Consumables. Items supplied under this plan include lights, cabling used by council's electrical trade services team, and also the traffic network services team within city standards. The previous contract had a separate category for LED lighting. So this item also uses an update to the structure which merges the two categories together into one. Current contract expires in late twenty twenty-three, and the S C P before us today seeks to establish a new contract for up to seven years. Item E is the Stores Board Submission for the Significant Contracting Plan for the Provision of Managed Print Services. Council uses managed print services to support internal printing, photocopying and scanning requirements across the organisation with at least three hundred and thirty devices across a hundred and twenty-one different sites. The service is provided by Fujifilm Business Innovation Australia. This arrangement is for the majority of council's office and corporate printing. Council also has a separate bulk printing arrangement. Council's printing volumes have reduced significantly in recent years, led by the pandemic and also associated increases in staff remotely working, and also the use of digital and paperless technology options as well, which is a good thing. And we're focused on ensuring council's overhead costs are carefully managed to deliver value for ratepayers' money. And council's preference is to directly contract with the existing service provider Fuji under a new corporate procurement arrangement. It's been determined that due to limited variance between service offerings in the market and substantial potential transition costs, the sole-source approach is the most prudent in this case. Item F is the Fig Tree Pocket and Kemble Road Intersection Upgrade Project. This upgrade will overall improve the efficiency of the intersection and the safety, importantly for all users. There have been multiple recorded crashes at the site. The council has undertaken extensive investigations to determine the preferred design option. To fix the safety and congestion concerns, council will be signalising the T intersection. The installation of traffic signals will improve safety at the intersection by controlling turning movements with traffic, providing wider curb-side lanes for cyclists and a signalised pedestrian crossing for people on foot. Improvements will also be made to sightlines, and it'll be a safer outcome for all users. The intersection will be realigned to provide a four-way intersection that will allow for both right turns in and out of Orogie Place, controlled by the traffic lights. This item today seeks approval to make an application to the minister for a resumption of private land to facilitate the upgrade as outlined above. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further speakers?
Thanks, Jip.
Councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thank you, Deputy Chair. Can I just ask that item A and C be taken seriatum individually? So A by itself, C by itself, and then G, E, F together for voting?
For voting, okay. Please continue.
All right?
Ah, yes, so we're still Swiss, A for voting, C for voting, and then D, E, F for voting.
Yeah, together, yep, that's right. Thank you. So on item A, the report talks, the report initially talks about consolidating Green Square and Brisbane Square together, but in the recommendation we're voting on doesn't make that clear. I understand that might be the intent of it, and given there's now going to be a lease extension for Brisbane Square, and perhaps the intention is that when the Green Square lease runs out, those staff will be relocated to Brisbane Square or somewhere else, maybe? We're just sort of guessing here, because that's really not clear in the recommendation before us. As I said at the start, it talks about the two leases coming to an end. So I'm not entirely sure if that is the arrangement that we're being asked to vote on today. Covid has certainly shown us that the flexibility in work arrangements is important and having the ability to work either from home or remotely, as well as being office-based, is critical at some times, as we've discovered over the last couple of years. In my conversations with managers throughout council over the last couple of years, it was made very clear that not only was remote working achievable in those circumstances, but it offered better work-life balance for people and increased productivity in a lot of cases. So we need to ensure that any office-based solution does cater for a mix of work in office and also work from home and remotely as well. Council employees have been at the forefront during the pandemic, and they need to be looked after and their efforts recognised in this kind of arrangement, I think. If this is clearly planned for, we, I assume, should also see a reduction in the space needed for office-based staff too, given how empty that building is at times. Again, perhaps the same amount of space will be required, because staff from Green Square will be moving in, but we're really not clear on what's before us today. Council employees deserve to be looked after when it comes to decisions concerning their working futures in this organisation. Clause B, we're not talking about at the moment, are we?
No.
So clause C, the Annual Operational Plan Progress and Quarterly Financial Report, we may as well throw this in the bin. From what I understand now, from what the Lord Mayor has said, next week, there's going to be a whole new budget. And from what he has said, we can presume that, it's lots of excuses we've just heard there, but years of mismanagement-
Fifty-seven million.
Fifty-seven million dollars' worth of excuses, years of mismanagement, cost blowouts on major projects for the last ten years, the highest debt this city has ever seen, the highest rates increases this year in a decade, and the Lord Mayor says it's somebody else's problem. I think there are root causes, and this item before us today does expose some of them. And this is just a taste of what residents will be expecting next week now, from what we understand. This report today, and I'm sure next week's, are going to remind Brisbane's long-suffering ratepayers that they are paying more and they're getting less in return. We've seen this year the highest rates increases in a decade, the highest debt levels this city has ever seen. But residents are scratching their heads, what are we getting for it? Out in the suburbs of Brisbane, what kind of return are they getting for this historic level of debt and the highest rates take a city has ever seen? You know, it goes down. Next week's budget review and this budget review before us today can be sheeted home to those decisions that this L M P administration have made over the last decade, and particularly on their metro project, which has blown out from nine hundred and forty-four million dollars to one point seven billion dollars, but delivering less than was initially promised. And that says everything you need to know about how this L M P administration manages people's money. So when we look at what is here before us today, and I'm sure what we're going to get next week is a document that the Lord Mayor calls modern and readable, but in reality, it's secretive, and that's by design. He obviously knew what was coming. There was a decision was made, a political decision, and that was the advice that was given to us by City Legal, by the chief legal officer. He advised that this decision to make this budget so secretive, to remove line items out of the budget so that individual items could no longer be tracked, was a political decision that this Lord Mayor made. By lumping all of those expenditures, all those blowouts, all of those carryovers into just single line items was by design. So we don't know. We're going to have to take his word for it. Next week, when they bring a budget review through with just a couple of line items, we don't know which projects are going to be cut. We don't know how much, you know, debt is increasing as a result of individual decisions on individual projects. They're only going to be headline figures. Anything could be cut from the suburban work schedule without anyone knowing, because that document, well, remains to be seen. We certainly hope there's an amended version of that coming with the papers next week as well, but that's not part of the budget. That's just an appendix. as well, but that's not part of the budget, that's just an appendix. So we will never know if those projects are on time, except if the Lord Mayor decides to include a couple as examples in these budget papers before us today. There could be more cuts to projects like the Nudgy Recreation Reserve that we would never know about until that project was complete or until it was left gutted and the community didn't.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Councillor Cassidy's a point of order.
I just ask on your ruling, the Lord Mayor is allowed to speak about what may be coming next week or what is coming next week. Today's the annual report, not what may be coming next week from the Leader of the Opposition.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councillor Cassidy.
No, I'm talking about the report before us today, sorry.
If you could get back to the report before us, Councillor Cassidy.
No, no, yeah.
But I understand the context of what you're saying.
I am, talking about, the Nudgy Rec Reserve is included in this year's budget, that's what I'm talking about. It's not, is it?
Councillor Cassidy, please continue.
It is, have you read the papers before us? Nudgy Rec Reserve is referenced directly in Programme Three. You didn't see that, did you? I guess they don't, I suppose the LMP council, why would they read? Why would they read anything? That's exactly right. That's what I own golf, I've ever seen one there, civic cabinet, rubber stamp, local councillor doesn't care. I mean, this is the store of the LMP out in the suburbs of Brisbane.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
I ask your ruling on bringing him back to today's papers.
I support your point of order. Councillor Cassidy, if you could please return back to the item before us, which was, you were speaking to item C.
Yes, and I'm talking about the Nudgy Recreation Reserve, which is included in Programme Three on page maybe 19 or 20, I haven't got it right in front of me right now. And councillor Allen, who's the local councillor and civic cabinet chair of this council, had to go back to the community after gutting that project in a previous budget review, had to go back to the community with his tail between his legs and say, oh, the Stores Board will approve more money, we'll just, we'll put more money into that project. But we don't see that before us today because therein lies the point, we will never know. We will never know because the way in which this LMP mayor and his LMP civic cabinet have changed this city's budget, all of those decisions are made in secret behind closed doors and the community never ever knows how their money is being spent on a line item by line item way like we used to. There's an operating surplus in the papers before us today of $47 million. So not sure if you can really believe anything the Lord Mayor says, given they can't be backed up by facts in black and white anymore, we're supposed to take his word for it. But there's an operating surplus of $47 million which is funded, which is funded from the record high intake of rates and utility charges that we see in the papers before us as well. And no wonder there's a record take in rates and utility charges because we've just, we have just had the highest rates increase in a decade, taking that rates take to the highest level our city has ever seen. Today, residents are paying double the amount in rates that they were when this LMP administration came to power. We've seen a significant increase in liabilities as well in just three months from June 22, up a whopping $167 million. And three months doesn't sound like very good management of a budget. So debt is up, rates are up, there's billions of dollars being spent on inner-city projects, but what about the suburbs of Brisbane? Programme One, one of the highlights in there says that 50% of all of that budget is being spent on a single inner-city project, the Brisbane Metro. In fact, when you look at the highlights of the programme in active transport infrastructure, the LMP lists the removal of banana bars in a couple of locations and two e-scooter racks in the CBD and one footpath in Ascot. That's what they list as their achievements in this programme area. That's the achievements of this LMP administration over an entire quarter when it comes to active transport, how pathetic. When we see 6,000 roads and streets without a footpath, you'd think we would be seeing an historic investment in active transport infrastructure in footpaths around our city, but regrettably, no, we don't see that. So what about tackling Brisbane's chronic traffic congestion problems which were laid bare in the Brisbane Key Corridors Report? What showed that our city is now more congested than ever?
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
Thank you. Move for an extension.
Second.
Move for an extension of time, councillor Cook and councillor Strunk. Those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Yeah, thanks very much, Deputy Chair. So the Key Corridors Report shows that Brisbane is now more congested than ever before. We have more congestion in our city than at any other point in our city's history. And so what does this LMP council list as one of their key achievements? To improve journey times for motorists. Well, brace yourselves, everyone. They list as one of the key achievements in managing the transport network as displaying digital footballs for the AFL and Rugby League Grand Finals on the speed awareness monitors, the SAM signs. That's the key achievement. You can't, I mean, if you made this sort of stuff, this sort of stuff wouldn't appear in an episode of Utopia, it would be too ridiculous. But this is what this LMP administration actually lists as a key achievement in managing the transport network. You know, I love football as much as the next person, but the cupboard must be incredibly bare if this is the one they trot out in terms of kicking a goal to improve traffic congestion around Brisbane. Talking about drainage now, in Programme Three, across 190 suburbs of Brisbane and after the most devastating flood our city has ever seen in February this year, we have seen six drainage projects completed with eight more to go. That's what this LMP administration lists as an achievement. You know, we often talk about the forgotten suburbs, there is no better example of that, that in the 190 suburbs of Brisbane, this administration can manage to do just 14 drainage projects and have eight of those in progress as some sort of achievement. They are absolutely shameful statistics. There are hundreds of suburbs that are in need of urgent help, whether they're from Bald Hills to Brighton, Deegan, Zulme and Nunndu, Rockleigh, Morningside, dozens and dozens of others that we hear about all the time. You know, and I recently did an exercise in doing a file request and asking the CEO for information about drainage projects that are currently listed awaiting funding in my ward, and I was told that was budgeting confidence. So only the Lord Mayor could see that as local councillor. I couldn't see projects that were investigated, sometimes at my request, investigated and then listed for funding. And then, and then I did a file request for drainage projects in the Marchant Ward and I was told there are none. There are no drainage projects listed in the Marchant Ward whatsoever, still awaiting an answer for Brackenridge and Northgate as well. But I suppose none of that, it did surprise me a bit when I got that, but it really shouldn't have. When you see before us today that only six drainage projects have progressed this quarter and there's only eight more to go across 190 suburbs of Brisbane, but don't worry, the metro project can blow out from $944 million to $1.7 billion and it's something they are proud of. That tells you everything you need to know about the priorities of this administration before us today. When, we should be seeing an acceleration of those projects, an acceleration of the construction of footpaths and active transport infrastructure and bikeways and connecting those key links and addressing congestion and investing in public transport. We see a Lord Mayor getting up here and crowing about the sale of our publicly-owned ferries and cutting of services, when we should be seeing an acceleration of drainage projects and flood mitigation, but instead we see an acceleration of blowouts on inner-city projects. Again, it just shows you the kind of priorities that this administration have for our city. When it comes to Programme Four, Future Brisbane, this is where we should see a lot of action on addressing the housing crisis here in Brisbane and this council doing absolutely everything it can be. We finally, finally had confirmation last week from the deputy mayor, that, well, we knew they hadn't done a housing strategy, but finally had confirmation that they hadn't bothered to progress that over the last three years because, because the, we heard lots of excuses last week, the demolishing community facilities because of mould, they weren't doing a housing strategy because of the state government, lots of excuses were flying around. Everyone else's fault, of course.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy, Deputy Mayor.
Councillor Cassidy, take a question?
No.
Councillor Cassidy, will you take a question from Deputy Mayor?
No.
I'm sure.
You're sure? Great.
Councillor Cassidy, please continue.
Fantastic. So this administration was directed by the state government. In agreeing to the amendment to city plan to ban townhouses and units in low-density residential areas, they were required to deliver a housing strategy as a result of that three years ago, three years ago. And the deputy mayor admitted last week that council, this LMP administration, just hadn't bothered to do it and then tried to blame somebody else.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor. I ask for your ruling on something which is a blatant mistruth. You were here last week, I can't claim misrepresentation, but I did not say that.
It's not a point of order.
No, Deputy Mayor, as you haven't spoken on this item yet, you can't claim misrepresentation, but you are able to speak, but you are able to speak within these items as required. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Deputy Chair. So when it comes to housing and homelessness, this Lord Mayor.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order.
To the report, I don't think any of that's mentioned in the report.
Councillor Cassidy, in regards to, like, I could understand a brief mention in regards to a housing strategy in Programme Four, but is there anything in particular here that you're now speaking to that deals with council's delivery of a housing strategy in these items? I can't seem to see one.
No, no, Chair, the point is they're not delivering one. This LMP administration refuses to deliver a housing strategy. They talk about neighbourhood plans, they talk about the importance of doing neighbourhood plans in this document, but won't deliver a homelessness strategy or a housing strategy to deal with the housing crisis. I'll move on, I'll move on, Deputy Chair. This speaks volumes though. There's nothing, there's nothing to see, that's right. You know, the Lord Mayor says it's someone else's job, he's done enough. The Lord Mayor reckons he's done quite enough when it comes to housing and homelessness. So he wants to move on, I'll move on as well.
If I could bring you back, Councillor Cassidy.
I'll move on, Deputy Chair, as well. So, absolutely. The tide's gone out, a lot of these LMP councillors are going to be caught without any swimmers on, I think, pretty soon. The numbers don't lie, Deputy Chair. When you look at these papers before us today and the ominous, the ominous warnings of the Lord Mayor in his opening address today is that for a long time, more and more residents feel like they're not getting good value for money out in the suburbs. We know that's the case, but when they, when they see in this budget and the review before us today that despite record levels of debt, despite record levels of rates and utility charges coming into council, they can't even get the basics, they can't get a footpath in their suburb, they can't get a drainage project funded, they see public transport being cut, they know they're not getting good value for money from this LMP administration. On item D, the Stores Board submission for contracting, plan for supply and delivery of electrical fittings and consumables, we support this contracting plan for the equipment that, you know, our staff need to use to do this kind of electrical work. We support the purchasing of this equipment, but we note that more of this should be used by in-house council-employed electricians and electrical apprentices. And the Lord Mayor made a very good point earlier that you can't get tradespeople at the moment, maybe you could if you employed them. Maybe if you didn't contract out all that basic work, you would actually be able to get tradespeople to do work for council in-house if you employed them on a full-time, permanent basis. Perhaps you could. And given the size of this council, Deputy Chair, it's woeful how many permanent trade staff and how few apprentices this administration now employs. This is of course part of their long-running campaign to hollow out council's workforce and isn't that coming home to roost now? You know, we could be petty and say we told you so, but we'll wait and see, we'll wait and see what next week brings for us today. Item E is the provision of print services. So the item, the item is for print services and printers and it's safe to say we can, you know, be rest assured, we can be rest assured that this LMP administration and the LMP councillors on that side of the chamber are expert when it comes to printed materials. We know the Lord Mayor is printing a whopping 21 million copies of the Living in Brisbane newsletter, nearly one for every single person in Australia.
Councillor Cassidy, if I could bring you back, this is in regards to printing services, not around the printing of the Living in Brisbane, this is around office equipment. If I could bring you back to that, please.
Yeah, yeah, take your point, Deputy Chair. We certainly hope that these printers and the printing services in the contract before us today aren't misused, like we've seen the Lord Mayor and LMP councillors misuse printed materials throughout this organisation, to the tune of $30,000 in councillor Mackay's case just recently as well. So we will, we will support that item. And then just briefly, the resumption in item F has been negotiated. We certainly hope the project does what it says it will do in terms of making the area more safe for pedestrians and motorists as well, and we want to make sure that this administration carries through on those commitments.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. Further speakers? Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr Deputy Chair. Item A is the new lease for council CBD office accommodation at Brisbane Square. Council currently has city-based staff spread across two sites at Brisbane Square on George Street and at Green Square at St Paul's Terrace in Fortitude Valley. As the Lord Mayor said earlier, our current lease for Brisbane Square expires in October 2026 and the lease for Green Square expires in August 2027. The lease for Brisbane Square has a five-year option to extend, which would expire in October 2031. But as you could appreciate, this timing would not be suitable for a potential transition to a new building, given the proximity of the 2032 games. So as with all negotiations for council's operating expenses, when thinking about council's future office accommodation, achieving the best value money for ratepayers is the paramount consideration. So this means going to the market. It means going to the market and reviewing our current building to determine what is the best outcome for our employees and for our ratepayers. In evaluating new build proposals, there were a number of risks identified. A review of existing stock found that there was no other office space within the Brisbane CBD with a vacancy that met council's timing and floor space requirements. So as outlined in the submission, Mr Deputy Chair, we are seeking approval to enter a new lease at Brisbane Square as it represents the best value money, best value for money outcome for ratepayers and the best outcome for our employees. The new lease is proposed to commence on the 1st of December 2022 with an expiry date of the 30th of November 2038. Detailed technical negotiations for Brisbane Square have resulted in agreement of the minimum building requirements, including improvements in the sustainability performance of the building. The commercial outcomes, Mr Deputy Chair, are detailed in the report. Over the next 12 months, there will be a lot of work done to plan in detail the works that are needed to support the future transition and the refit of Brisbane Square. Through you, Deputy Chair, to councillor Cassidy, as part of finding the suitable accommodation for council, occupancy requirements were a key factor that would allow both Green Square and Brisbane Square to move into one location when the current Green Square lease expires in 2027. So as part of the new lease arrangements for Brisbane Square, there will be a refit which creates a more open plan and collaborative environment for our employees. Floor space currently occupied by physical document storage and our data centres will actually be rationalised in line with technological improvements to assist with accommodating all staff in the one building. The modern refit of Brisbane Square will create an attractive and productive workplace that employees can enjoy while ensuring there is adequate accommodation to have both Green Square and Brisbane Square employees in the one location. The refit will not only modernise general floor layouts and social spaces, but also will see an upgrade to end-of-trip facilities and technology for our employees to better collaborate. Mr Deputy Chair, item number C is the annual operation plan progress and quarterly financial report for the period ended September 2022. It's all in the title, Mr Deputy Chair, the period ending September 2022, not November, September. As has been noted, there is a new format for this report. I believe the report is much clearer, it provides insight into the work done in the quarter towards achieving the outcomes of the annual operation plan. As has been said many times before in this chamber, it is a snapshot in time. In the statement of consolidated income, there is an increase in grants and subsidies compared to this time in the last financial year, mainly due to an urban compared to this time in the last financial year, mainly due to an urban congestion fund grant, partly offset by decreases in other federal grants received last year. Of note is an increase in material and services costs, mainly due to a number of factors, including an increase in the cost of fuel and service and contract costs, which should be of little surprise if councillors have been paying attention. In the statement of cash flows, we see an increase in receipts for capital contributions, donations, subsidies, grants and other capital revenue, mainly due to grants received in the first quarter, including $70 million for the Brisbane Metro and $50 million for the voluntary home buyback scheme. Mr Deputy Chair, item E is the significant contracting plan for the provision of managed print services. As the Lord Mayor explained, when we talk about managed print services, we're talking about our internal printing, photocopying and scanning needs, basically the use of multifunction devices. It covers 330 devices across 121 sites, right across council. It doesn't cover bulk printing of information and mailouts. This service is provided by Fuji Film, and the current contract for managed print services expires at the end of November this year. When Covid hit, Mr Deputy Chair, and employees started working remotely, we instantly saw a drop in the volume of internal printing in council, and of course we would expect that. This helped along by the more prevalent use of software and apps available. More and more officers are choosing to go paperless, and they should be commended. Of course, there is an environmental benefit that comes from this as well as the financial benefit. We want council to be an efficient organisation, and whether we're talking about office buildings or printers, we have a responsibility to our residents in Brisbane to keep a close watch on our expenses. With this in mind, the proposal of this SCP is that we directly contract to the incumbent Fuji under a new corporate procurement arrangement. Key evidence to support a sole-source decision is that there is limited variance between printing devices and service offerings, leaving little substantial benefits in changing suppliers. There would also be a substantial internal transition cost of over $1 million just by changing vendors, in addition to the costs of an ICT management programme for council employees. We have, however, Mr Deputy Chair, negotiated a rate reduction with Fuji in addition to a refresh of our devices, noting that we'll be rationalising the number of devices by a sensible amount, in line with their reduced usage by our offices and by our employees. And I commend these items to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor. Further debate? councillor Strug.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I'd like to speak on item C, right, and specifically about the programme Governance, Programme Eight. And I think probably Programme Eight is probably the most important programme, sorry some of those chairs over there, but I think it's the most important programme because really it's about managing the city as a whole, right? And those other programmes are part of that, obviously. But I think, you know, governance is key, right, to anything that we do in business. And of course, we have a very big business here, it's almost $4 billion. And it's something that you've really got to focus on and concentrate on. And I don't think, well, at least since I became councillor anyways in 2016, we haven't really done it all that well, in my opinion, and I think it's opinion of my colleagues on this side as well. And our leader, the leader of the opposition here, outlined some of those issues, starting with Metro, which was very much, in my minds, I obviously, when I ran in 2016, because it was the big project that Mayor Quirk brought down, Lord Mayor Quirk brought down. And it was an eye-watering amount of money back then, it still is really, of $944 million. And of course, I've just seen, year after year after year, it's just climbed and climbed and climbed, it's added things, it's taken things away, and it's now about $1.7 billion. And, you know, when I talk to my constituents, my friends as well, they're just amazed at how much money we're investing in a project that's not really going to cover a lot of Brisbane, especially out the West, right? And the Lord Mayor brought that up in regards to stage two or three, whatever he's going to call it, and they're going to extend it all in years to come, but nothing to the West, nothing from really Inter Pilly, the Centenary Suburbs, Forest Lake, right through to Callum Vale, right through to, you know, the rest. Anyways, so in regards to governance, I don't think we've done a really good job as far as that project. And really, the other, of course, the other project is the green bridges, which again were an election promise, of course, five green bridges, we're going to invest $550 million, but never bothered to say about two or three of their bridges are at the behest of the state government or the federal government, because we're only investing $550 million. And again, my residents say, well, what's that going to do for us? We're out here in the western suburbs, we're out here in the suburbs, what do I need a green bridge for? It's all right for people living in the inner-city suburbs, and some tourism as well, of course, obviously, and maybe the occasional time they come in and maybe walk across it once, or maybe run across it, you know, for an event. But really, day-to-day, you know, it's an eye-watering amount of money to be investing on something that doesn't even put a retriculated or a public conveyance across it, right, like a bus. So anyway, so I was going through page 31, coming back to Programme Eight, page 31 here, and I had a look, and there's no less than eight times on just one page, the word rephased is used. Rephased, and of course, we all know what that means, I won't try to reeducate anyone here, because we all know what rephrase means, down the road. Anyways, so we have a look at, and the other key takeaway here on this page, page, is the word below budget. Below budget, below budget, below budget. And in some cases, maybe below budget can be considered a positive thing, but as I look at it, as they talk about the rephasing and the reasons why it's below budget, right, you have to say to yourself, well, either they're under-investing, whether it be capital expenditure, right, or they're below budget on operating expenses. And people would say, oh, well, that's a good thing, well, not really, because you're not, again, you're not investing in those services that our constituencies require. And some of the words, you know, I don't think these documents simple, or has been made simpler to read, because some of the expressions are really interesting. This one just jumped out at me, operating expenses or below budget for this period due to, and one of the line items here is rephased expenditure in the talented, capable and efficient council strategy. Jeez, you guys ticks on yourself, haven't you? Talented? Why would you even use the word in that sort of a document? Anyways, I just thought that was a bit funny. There's some other ones that I could go on about, but I would hope that this $57 million that the Lord Mayor announced today, that is, that impact on our budget since July 1, that $57 million, is that they've been working diligently behind the scenes, trying to find savings in the budget to make up for that, budgetary savings, and not cuts necessarily, but actually savings. I would hate to think that our trust funds, or I still call trust funds, sorry, our trust funds would be compromised in that respect, because we haven't had any increase in those funds for, well, we haven't even had the inflation increase over the years, and certainly we haven't had much of an increase, well, we had very little increase, in consideration of the inflation that was upon us anyways during budget. The other thing, of course, is the $1.3 billion, of course, is in capital works, right, capital expenditure, I should say, or capital works, right, is something that certainly we need to invest in the city, right, and there's no argument there. But it's got to be paid for, of course, and that shortfall over the next few years of $400 million is going to be a challenge. But the other thing that I just want to conclude in saying is that this document now, which is nothing like the ones that I've seen previously, of course, it really lacks transparency in programmes and projects. We really don't know what's favourable, unfavourable, temporary or permanent anymore, right? I mean, you just basically have to believe what the Lord Mayor says in regards to the budget and those programmes and projects, that everything at the end of the financial year will be fine, will be within budget. And I just think that this sort of a document that really lacks transparency, really, is really almost an attack on democracy, because really, I mean, the ratepayers of Brisbane have the right to know what programmes and projects, where they are, what's going to be delivered, what may not be delivered and have to be rolled over, and of course, this council's really good at rolling over on things, right, including drainage. So anyway, so I'll just conclude my comments there, as I think that city governance is the number-one programme in the city, and I think that this council has a great deal of work to do in this area, because I don't believe that they are governing this city as they should be. Thank you, Deputy Chair.
councillor Landis.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Landis, seconded by councillor Hutton, that the meeting adjourned for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All ayes in favour, say aye.
Aye.
To the contrary, no. The ayes have it, the meeting will be adjourned.
Good afternoon councillors, thank you. Thank you Deputy Chair for filling in while I was absent for an hour or two. Further speakers on E and C report, councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair, I just want to speak very briefly on item D, the significant contracting plan for the supply and delivery of electrical fittings and consumables. This item is a routine panel contract for the supply of electrical items to be used by the council's internal electricians to perform their work, prominently in the trade, services and traffic network services area. Standard stock items such as lights and cabling are purchased in bulk and stored in the council's warehouse so that council's electricians can access equipment more efficiently for their projects. Having these items at the depot creates efficiency for the officers who may unexpectedly need additional items. And as mentioned by the Lord Mayor, this contract plan moving forward will just have the one category as LED lights no longer need a separate section. I recommend this item to the chamber.
Thank you. Further speakers on E and C, any further speakers? No further speakers? So my understanding of the voting is for items A and C together, then items D, E and F? Oh, separately, okay, not together, okay, right. So item A as a separate vote, all in favour of item A, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it.
Division?
Division called by councillor Strug.
Seconded.
Seconded by councillor Cumming. Please ring the bells, ayes to my right, nays to the left. Billy, please close the bars. Attendants, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and four abstentions.
Thank you, that was for item A in the E and C report. Councillors, please resume your seats, we now move to the vote on item C. Item C, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor, councillor, sorry, which one's? Cassidy, sorry, councillor Cassidy, you're all standing, yeah. Cassidy and Cumming called the division. Please ring the bells, all in favour, please say aye. Thanks Billy, close the bars. Clarks, please read the results.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 18 in favour and four against.
Declare item C carried. Councillors, I understand we have items D, E and F together for voting, items D, E and F, all in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Declare that carried. Councillors, we now move to the debate on item B. Item B, Lord Mayor.
Point of order, Mr Chair, I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause B. I have received gifts in the form of ECA tickets totaling more than $500 but less than $2,000 from the Royal National Agricultural and Industrial Association of Queensland within the relevant period. As such, I will remove myself from the chamber for the duration of debate and voting.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order.
I too have a declarable conflict of interest in clause B, I have received gifts in the form of ECA tickets totaling more than $500 but less than $2,000 from the Royal National Agricultural and Industrial Association of Queensland within the relevant period. As such, I will remove myself from the chamber for the duration of debate and voting on this item.
Thank you. councillor Howe?
Point of order, Mr Chair, I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause B, I have received gifts totaling more than $500 but less than $2,000 from the Royal National Agricultural and Industrial Association of Queensland within the relevant period. As such, I will remove myself from the chamber for the duration of debate and voting on this item.
Thank you. Any further points of order? councillor Medic?
Point of order, Mr Chair, I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause B, I have received gifts in the form of ECA tickets totaling more than $500 but less than $2,000 from the Royal National Agricultural and Industrial Association of Queensland within the relevant period. As such, I will remove myself from the chamber for the duration of the debate and voting on this item.
Thank you. councillor Owen, point of order?
Point of order, Mr Chair, Mr Chair, I have a declarable conflict of interest in clause B, I have received gifts in the form of exhibition tickets totaling more than $500 but less than $2,000 from the Royal National Agricultural and Industrial Association of Queensland within the relevant period. As such, I will remove myself from the chamber for the duration of debate and voting on this item.
Thank you. Any further points of order? Thank you, is there any debate on item B?
Is there any debate on item B? Counselor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I rise on item B. The item relates to two proposed property disposals to adjoining property owners. The first site is a proposed lot on Gardner Road at Rochdale. Council acquired sites in Rochdale in 1992 as part of a broader waste management contract, which at the time was held by Pacific Waste Management. An adjoining owner, Austral Bricks, held a state-issued mining lease over the acquired land for clay extraction. And it was council's intention at the time that at the expiry of the mining lease, the excavated area could be used for landfill, which makes sense. While the land is no longer required for this purpose, in June last year, the state government granted Austral Bricks an extension to the mining lease for a further 25 years, with the potential for additional future extensions. The land in question is split into various city plan zonings. A development application process is progressing to reconfigure the lot boundaries to separate zonings on a lot basis, creating a larger emerging community zoned lot, Lot Three, and the remaining lots, One and Two, as open space. The proposed Lot Three has an area of 13.21 hectares. Brickworks has historically expressed an interest to acquire the council land. When the state government granted the mining lease extension, negotiations progressed between council and Brickworks regarding the proposed Lot Three. The proposed Lot Three will have limited to no value to the broader market due to this mining lease, and thus the approach of dealing directly with the adjoining landowner is supported. The second disposal, Mr. Chair, is a volumetric underground lot located at 52C O'Connell Terrace at Bowen Hills. The underground volumetric lot was created as part of the construction of the Clem Seven Tunnel for ventilation pipework. However, it was never used for this purpose due to a change in the design. The lot has been confirmed as surplus after an investigation by the City Projects Office. The adjoining owners to this underground lot identified are the RNA and the Department of Transport and Main Roads. RNA confirmed they would have an interest in purchasing the site as set out in this report. Proceeds from these disposals will, of course, be directed into council's parks and green space projects through the Green Future Fund, and I commend them to the chamber.
Councillors, we currently don't have quorum. Can you please ring the bells? Thank you, councillors. Any further speakers on item B? No further speakers. I now put item B to the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Can we send a message to Avastian councillors, please? Deputy Mayor, Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 15th of November, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by Counselor Hutton that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 15 November, 2022, be adopted. Deputy Mayor? No? No debate? Thank you. We now move to the vote on this report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Counselor Murphy, Transport Committee Report, please.
Chair, I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 15th of November, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by Counselor Murphy and seconded by Counselor Huang that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 15 November, 2022, be adopted. Counselor Murphy? No further debate? We now move to the vote on this report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Counselor Wines, Infrastructure Committee Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 15th of November, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by Counselor Wines and seconded by Counselor Matic that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 15 November, 2022, be adopted. Is there any debate? Counselor Wines? No further debate? I now move to the vote on this report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Counselor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee Report, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 15th of November, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by Counselor Allen and seconded by Counselor Hammond that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 15 November, 2022, be adopted. Is there any debate? No debate? I move to the vote on this report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Counselor Davis, Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee Report, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, 15 November, 2022, be adopted.
It has been moved by Counselor Davis and seconded by Counselor Mackay that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 15 November, 2022, be adopted. Is there any debate? Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I give my committee report, I've just had the very great pleasure of meeting with the Japanese delegation from the Yatsu Hagata Tidlands Nature Observation Centre. And we have a wonderful, that's in Narashino in Japan, and it's a wonderful group of people who will be making their way up to the chamber shortly to see the work that we do here. We've had a wonderful relationship, as you know, Mr. Chair, with this volunteer group. Our environment centres have been working with these volunteers in Narashino for about 25 years now. So it's a wonderful, wonderful relationship. And each year, the volunteers come across to share their observations and experiences at their tidelands. They spend a lot of time at Boondle Wetlands. And this year has been no different. Sadly, with COVID-19, they were unable to make a visit in person, but there were virtual meetings and conversations over the last two years. So it's a very special time to visit. It's a group of about 20 delegates. About half have only visited Brisbane for the first time this time. So they're enjoying our hospitality in our city, telling me how beautiful they think that our city is and the habitat that makes up Brisbane. So I look forward to them coming into the chamber and seeing the work that we do, and I wish them all the best. They're leaving tomorrow. They've eaten crocodile. They tell me that wasn't too chewy. It must have been cooked pretty well. The last time I had it, it was not so tasty. But anyway, just a lovely, lovely group of people who are absolutely committed to the environment. Their particular interest is in migratory shorebirds, and that's where our relationship is developed. Both Brisbane and Nagashino come together as Ramsar sites, or both of those destinations. That is, at the tidelands and of course, our wetlands at Boondle are Ramsar sites. And this group of people are particularly, as I said, interested in migratory shorebirds. Mr. Chair, the committee presentation last week was on Target 40. And Target 40, of course, is council's commitment to a 40% natural habitat cover on mainland Brisbane by 2031. We also had a couple of petitions. I'll get to those. Sorry, item B is, sorry, is a park naming, which is the formal naming of the park known as Glen Eagles Crescent Park. At 30 Glen Eagles Crescent, Oxley as Nyandaba Park. I know that the local councillor is very supportive of that park naming, and we were pleased to support it committee. Item C is a petition requesting council name the picnic area at the entrance to J.C. Slaughter Falls, Mount Coother as Camp Coother Place. This was a petition containing 19 signatures to name the picnic area at the entrance to the falls as Camp Coother Place. There is a strong military history, particularly the submariners of that place, and I know the submariners here in Brisbane are very excited that this place naming is going ahead. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further debate? Counselor Adaman?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I rise to speak in support of item C, the request for council to name the picnic area at the entrance to J.C. Slaughter Falls, Mount Coother to Camp Coother Place. Local history buffs are aware of the very important role that Mount Coother played in the Allies' war effort during World War II. Eighty years ago today, planning was well underway for the US Navy to formally take control of the Mount Coother Reserve. Essentially, it was used as a torpedo assembly facility, which they called Camp Coother. By the end of the war, Camp Coother had handled a total of 120,000 tonnes of explosives. Our role in the war effort came largely about, came about largely as a result of the Brisbane-born first American ambassador, Richard Casey. His efforts saw the Pensacola convoy, birthed at Hamilton, a mere 15 days after the attack on Pearl Harbour. And in 1943, especially after the sinking of the Centaur off the Sunshine Coast, Camp Coother gave the submarines fighting the Imperial Naval, sorry, submarines fighting the Imperial Naval Force the strategic weapons they needed to take the battle to the front line, very effectively too, I might add. As part of the war effort, the US naval construction battalions, otherwise known as the Seabees, were also busy building roads, bridges and other structures, a number of which can still be seen at J.C. Slaughter Falls picnic area today. And as an aside, Chair, the Seabees motto was can do, and they certainly left their mark on Mount Coother. Hence the reference and significance of this particular park entrance in this petition. Chair, recognizing Camp Coother and honoring those men and women who served during World War II is something that the Shrewna Council has done very well and that we're very proud of. It's also important that we're doing this now as a salute to those remaining World War II veterans. Chair, I've spoken before in this chamber about another council initiative at Mount Coother, the revitalized National Australia Remembers Freedom Wall. This was a project driven by the then-Veteran Affairs Minister Kon Shakka, and we on this side acknowledge that he genuinely cared and was very passionate about our return servicemen and women. On the 11th of November, 1995, Minister Shakka and the then-Lord Mayor laid a foundation stone at the location where the wall now stands. But less than a year later, prior to the completion of the wall, the stone went missing. Despite the best efforts of botanical garden staff, they haven't been able to find it, and trying to locate its whereabouts elsewhere remains a mystery today. All sorts of theories abound, but I won't go into them, other than to say that one person who might be able to answer that question is Counselor Cassidy's political hero, Jim Sawley. If he can help us find it, that would be great, because the stone needs to return to its rightful home at Mount Coother. Chair, the 50th anniversary, sorry, please do, please do. Chair, the 50th anniversary VP memorial wall is a hop, skip and jump away from the proposed Camp Coother Place. This naming will be a first step not only in discovering the 30-odd kilometres of trails at Mount Coother, but in discovering our city's wonderful history. And as the councillor representing Mount Coother, this is something I'm very excited about. Thank you.
Thank you. Further debate on the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee Report? No further debate? Counselor Davis? We now move to the vote on this report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Counselor Marks, City Standards Committee Report, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 8th of August, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. It has been moved by Counselor Marks and seconded by Counselor Toomey that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 15 November, 2022, be adopted. Counselor Marks?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one item with the committee presentation on the litter activities that members of our council team undertake. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further debate? No further debate? We now move to the vote on this report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Counselor Howard, Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 15th of November, 2022, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It has been moved by Counselor Howard and seconded by Counselor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 15 November, 2022, be adopted. Counselor Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, lots and lots of things happening around Brisbane. And as the deputy mayor mentioned before, of course, we're getting ready for Christmas and lovely sales and things such as that. But this week, we celebrated Melt Festival, and we had the Brisbane Pride Choir, who were there to entertain us. And I think that it's appropriate that we mention the dreadful occurrence in the United States and send our condolences to all of those that were involved. And I think, you know, how lucky are we to live in this beautiful city? And that was especially so with the Melt Festival and all of the wonderful occurrences that we had there. We also, on Sunday, it was Transgender Day of Remembrance, and again, a fantastic opportunity for Brisbane to celebrate its diversity. On Saturday, I was, I joined the Powerhouse CEO, and we opened the Pleasure Dome, which is a wonderful structure there near the Powerhouse, which is going to be used by the community and the Powerhouse, and a fantastic opportunity to bring even more things to see and do to Brisbane. The Wyndham Festival, I'm not going to seal Counselor Cummings' thunder because it has been absolutely marvellous. I popped down there, and I also popped into Olivia Newton-John Day at the clubhouse at Maruka. And again, what a fantastic opportunity that the people there have taken with that clubhouse. And I really want to say a big thank you to the operators because they've done an amazing job, and many people from the community enjoyed our outdoor cinema of Zanadu, and it was a really great afternoon. And then finally, on Sunday, it was the Brisbane Corral here at City Hall, joined by the governor and Professor Nimmo, and it was Hyden's The Creation. But we had the Brisbane Philharmonic Orchestra, the Brisbane Corral, the Oriana Choir, and the wonderful Emily Cox as the conductor. And I really want to congratulate everyone for a wonderful performance and for making our beautiful city of Brisbane even more beautiful. Our committee presentation last week was on the Carindale Library Make-A-Space update, and it was show and tell, so we all had some wonderful opportunity to ask questions about some of the wonderful opportunities that there are at the Carindale Library's Make-A-Space. And of course, this has been possible because of the extension there, and I know that it is much loved by the community there, but it also enables people right across Brisbane to be learning new things. And so it was a great opportunity, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate? We now move to the vote on this report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. I'd just like to acknowledge, walking into the public gallery, the delegation that Counselor Davis mentioned earlier, volunteers from the Yatsu Hagata Nature Observation Centre from Narashima, Japan, welcome to the council chamber. Acknowledge Mr. Hitoshi Akututsu. Thank you for joining us here today, and we hope you've enjoyed your time here in Brisbane and your opportunity to see the workings of Brisbane City Council. Thank you very much for being here. We have, and move on to, the report of the Finance Committee report. Councillor Cunningham, Finance and City Governance Committee report, please.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the fifteenth of November twenty twenty-two, be adopted.
Seconded.
Thank you. It was being moved by Councillor Cunningham and seconded by Councillor Huang that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday, fifteenth November twenty twenty-two, be adopted. Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Just very briefly, we had a presentation on the Local Government Management Association Challenge. We actually have two teams who participate in this and wanted to give them a big shout out, because Team Twister got a great result, but Team Meangin actually won the state challenge. So my congratulations to them, and thank you very much for their efforts in creating a wonderful workplace at Brisbane City Council, and I'll leave the rest to the chamber.
Thank you. Is there any further debate? No further debate. We move to the vote on this report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, petitions, are there any petitions? Councillor Cook.
Thank you. I have a petition to fly the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander flags on the Story Bridge.
Thank you. Any further petitions? No further petitions. Councillor Landers.
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded.
Thank you. It was being moved by Councillor Landers and seconded by Councillor Cassidy that the petition as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, general business. Are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? No one standing. Are there any items of general business? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on the fantastic work done by not only Councillor Marks's area in the Waste Smart Awards, but what I'd like to now call the Holland Park Waste Smart Awards, for the entrance from my area that did just such a spectacular work on not only becoming finalists, but actually winning their categories in the Waste Smart Awards this year. I have to start from the bottom and work up, there's quite a few, but I am so proud and I do need to share the fantastic work that these community groups are doing. In the Early Learning Award, the winner of the category was Prior Street Kindy at Tarragindy. They're absolutely gorgeous, they have a bush care kindy, they love the work they do outside, but they're also very much about saving the environment. The teachers there do a wonderful job in prioritising composting and careful menu planning. I've seen the menu, it's pretty spectacular. They make sure that they buy in bulk and they make sure they buy local, which is all about reducing their carbon footprint. And they're working very hard to educate those children in very early ways on how to reduce their carbon footprint and reduce, in particular, the plastic wrap around their lunch as well. In the school awards category, we had a highly commended by Massey Road State School, and they're in the very early stages of getting their head around what the environmental groups and the reuse and recycling in their city. But there's three students there that have spent nearly every lunchtime over the year trying to encourage students around them to do the right thing and make sure their school is on track to minimise their waste by reusing and recycling. And of course, the winners of the school award category, Mount Gravatt State High School. Now, the environmental group at Mount Gravatt State High School have been, established themselves as an environmental hub way before this became a major trend in schools, they've been doing this for at least ten years. Their science teacher, Andrew, I won't embarrass him by naming him totally, has worked tirelessly for many, many years, throughout his lunchtimes, before and after school, teaching the brightest young students how to make sure that they can minimise their footprint. They do everything from weeding and gardening to a vegetable garden to make sure that the tuck shop has veggies and getting everybody in the school thinking about how they can reuse and recycle. So they are definitely well deserved of the school award major prize. In the outstanding award, there was the Tarragindy Community Garden, who, since their inception just a few years ago, with the tireless Renee McBrien, who has already been mentioned today at their helm, worked tirelessly to recycle all of their organic and food waste, and as we heard, bread tags, bottle and metal tops and broken tyres at their hub from the entire Tarragindy and Holland Park area and anybody else who wants to come and work with them as well. Everything that they reuse and recycle is then reused and recycled right here in Queensland, so there's minimal footprint as well, and they do an absolutely outstanding job. Then, of course, the piece, the award that goes to the best social media campaign, which is the People's Choice Award, of course, goes to a high school, Mount Gravatt State High School, who obviously then got the, got the peeps on board and got them voting, because we had nearly four thousand votes this year in the People's Choice Award. And I'm sure a lot of those votes came for the hard-working Mount Gravatt State High School students who were sharing on their social media. But if that means it's advertising exactly what you can do in this space, that is a good thing. And last but not least, the All-Star, and she is an absolute All-Star, because she did start a lot of these Tarragindy communities on their way, is Renee McBrien. And I'm wondering, I have to ask Councillor Marks, All-Star means, is she going to do a Hall of Fame so that she can't ever compete again, because she's going to just keep knocking it out of the park for years to come? She is definitely a bar, and she's a very high bar, as you heard from Councillor Marks early today. Fourteen and a half thousand kilograms of organic waste recycled, nine hundred and twenty kilos of bottle tops, five hundred and fifty kilos of metal tops, a hundred and eighty kilos of plastic bread tags, just to name a few. It is amazing tireless work, and as a nurse, she does the same with her medical supplies and doing the same at hospitals as well. She is absolutely an All-Star and thoroughly deserved of the award again, as are all of the communities in my group. And I am very proud to hear that Holland Park State School, I will be there tomorrow to see them get awarded with their first place in the Waste Smart Games, and of course, Mount Gravatt State High School, who came in a very close third, I hear, behind Payne Road. So, well done to my entire community. I am so proud of you. Keep up the great work.
Thank you. Further speakers in general business, Councillor Cummings.
Yes, thanks very much. I've got two matters to discuss. I was going to talk about them last week, but I had to go off to some school awards evenings. The first one is the, there was a petition response to a building of a grandstand in Kitchener Park at Wyndham. And the background of the petition was an idea floated in the, within sections of the Winter Manly Seagulls Rugby League Club. They wanted a, a situation, stadiums to accommodate bigger, bigger crowds than their current existing home ground at Cougar Eye Oval, which joins the Winter Manly Leagues Club is situated. They also wanted to be able to compete with other clubs in their statewide host plus cup competition, who had a grandstand and sort of bit of it was keeping up with the Joneses. But there are a substantial number of clubs like Redcliffe, Sunshine Coast, Mackay Towns or Cairns, who have stadiums now and can accommodate significantly larger crowds. The cost would have been considerable, figures of twenty-five million dollars were quoted, and there was no government funding on offer, so it was a rather difficult situation for them. The mother, the other massive issue was the effect of the footprint of a stadium at Kitchener Park and the fact that that would have had on training fields for the Winter Manly Junior Rugby League, which is a separate club which actually leases that part of Kitchener Park. The juniors need to be catered for, was the catch cry, but no one came up with any idea of how this would occur and how it could be funded. I looked at the possibility of using some land currently leased to the Wyndham Softball Association with their approval, but there were no lights or toilet facilities. A protest group sprang up, wanting Winter Manly home games continuing to be played at Cougar Eye Oval, because it's, at this stage, it's only one game a year, the preseason game against the Broncos, where they actually more than filled Cougar Eye Oval. So, this led to this petition being circulated in the mistaken belief that a development application had been lodged, and that was not the case and remains so. So I support the response to the petition, with council cutting hardly, knock back a DA when one hasn't been lodged. But anyhow, unfortunately, this matter has caused some bitterness between the rugby league community in Winter Manly, which is a very strong rugby league community, and hopefully over time, that'll be overcome. But I'll certainly be letting the residents know the response to the petition, which, as I said, I support fully. The other matter I wanted to discuss was the Fringe Festival, and I wore my t-shirt again today, and it's, yes, I've, I've, I've never had to, I've been, I've only got two of them, so I've been washing them, I've been washing two, three times a week, it's which is, you know, it's a lot for me. Normally, it's every Sunday. Sorry. Now, the, the Wyndham Fringe Festival this year is in, on the park, on the Espinade, and it's at a park called, well, a lot of us call it Bandstand Park, some people call it George Clayton Park. It's got some history, actually, because there's an old festival called the Spring Parade, which was held for decades in Winter Manly, and it was always, Councillor Hammond might, might recall it, no, it was always held down on the Espinade, and so it's, it's in the same park as that. The Fringe Festival is underway, it started last Wednesday, and it's a labour of love for its founder, Tom Oliver, and his tireless efforts over the years have resulted in an incredible offering in two, for two thousand twenty-two. But you couldn't say there's too many performing artists who say the pandemic was a good opportunity for them, but Tom isn't your average person. When lockdowns and border closures forced Tom to return home, he was actually performing as part of the Velvet Rewired Show with Marcia Hines. Tom came home and decided to try to establish his own festival, and it's gone from a, from one weekend in two thousand twenty to a week in two thousand twenty-one, and now it's two and a half weeks in two thousand twenty-two. The Fringe boasts a spiegel tent, a performance dome, very significant structures, both of them, a ferris wheel, a rooftop container bar, it's a bar that's actually created out of a, a container, basically, it's a container, it's a, yeah, shipping container, yeah, yeah. And it's got great little views of the bay during the daylight hours, and it's neat at night as well. But anyhow, back in two thousand twenty, Wyndham Fringe Festival sold six thousand six hundred tickets and broadcast to nearly ten thousand people throughout the world. This year, they're aiming to sell twenty thousand tickets now, whether they'll meet that target or not, but it, they're going to give it a good go. The main headline act is the Velvet Rewired Show, which is a great show, I've already seen it twice. The star performer is Marcia Hines, but the star of that show, in my view, is the, well, I call him the hula hoop man. I don't know what his name is, but he's, he's a fellow who looks a bit, a bit out of shape, actually, you'd say. You'd say he wasn't very athletic and everything, but he is, he is amazing what he can do with hula hoops and anything from, you know, three or four at one time, from arms and legs going everywhere, to about twenty going around the hips all the time and, and.
Yeah.
I'm not going to pretend to do it, so, I can remember, I can remember hula hoops. Few people probably, for people my age, you'd need to probably be my age, when, when mainly the girls, I've got to say, but used to bring hula hoops to school when I was at primary school, and, and they were practising, and they were very good at, at wearing hula hoops.
Councillor Cummings, don't be diverted. Back to the agenda item.
So there's about fifty-five acts going to appear throughout the Fringe. It's not all at the park. In some of the local shops and bars have had Fringe Festival performers performing in, in the evening. So there's, I think there's been two at Cedar and Pine, one at the, the New Bar, the Republic, good name for the bar, isn't it? And one at Frenchie's Coffee Shop as well. And so there's been that as well. And there's Diesel's coming down, singer-songwriter Diesel, who a lot of people are keen to see, I'm sure he'll be booked out. And also, we've got Nick Gross, who's a local indigenous singer-songwriter, and who's written a whole show with, with a story and with songs, linking them together, and she's a, she's a bargain at twenty dollars a ticket, so. Anyhow, the Velvet's going, it goes daily from Wednesday, and it's twice a day on Friday and Saturday, so well worth getting along to see. There's also been an emphasis on comedians this year. Dave Hughes, who's already performed, and I saw him, and he's great, Cal Wilson, Akmel, and some pop-up comedy club showcases. So the bayside's very lucky to have Tom Oliver. The arts give us opportunities to learn, to laugh and to escape, but Tom's vision stretched beyond the arts. Tom's vision includes the beautiful bayside and the wonderful community that make it what it was, and what it is, sorry. The Wyndham Fringe Festival provides benefits to performers, businesses, community groups and the bayside economy. So Wyndham Fringe Festival continues for another week and a half until Sunday, December the fourth. Tickets can be purchased at wyndhamfringe.com, and I think I've bought ten of them so far, and I've been to four shows and looking forward to the other six. Thank you.
Further speakers in general business? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I rise briefly, just to speak on LGAQ twenty twenty-two, but before I do so, I just wanted to congratulate Payne Road on their achievement from preventing Holland Park's clean sweep.
Well done.
It took, yeah, I know. I had to do it. Mr Chair, recently, I attended the LGAQ conference with Councillor Maddick, and we heard last week what Councillor Maddick had to say about the conference. I myself, apart from joining Councillor Maddick and Councillor Cummings for the voting sessions, did spend a fair bit of time with the people there showcasing their wares at the conference. And some of the items that were on display for all local governments across Queensland were such things as plant equipment, wifi providers, solar panel installers and providers, batteries were also there, large, large-scale batteries, insurance was also there, and there was much more. But what I particularly want to talk about was the thing that drew most of my attention, and I did ask Councillor Maddick to come over and have a look at it as well, was the very innovative fire truck for the rural fire service. To say that this vehicle, the new vehicle, the new style, the new design, was, was light years ahead of anything I have ever seen. A large part of the vehicle's water capacity is held within its chassis, so it had a very low weight, which means that it would be, would be able to get up hills very easily. The safety systems that have come out of the cab and, in the, in the cab itself to, to stop the firefighters from suffocating during an event was just outstanding. They had foam that goes around the windows, the air was filtered. They also were carrying oxygen masks within the cab itself, which gave them an extra twenty minutes. It was truly an outstanding vehicle. It also had infrared sensors up the front and infrared vision, so in the cases where there was a complete white-out from smoke, they could see where they could go and, and find their way out of the, out of the, out of danger. But it was, it was truly amazing. I spent about half an hour with the, with the guys there, talking about this vehicle. And what was really surprising was that on that day, they were giving that vehicle away to a local government.
Local?
Yeah. And this was a private company that had designed this particular fire truck, and they were giving it away. So I really want to shout out to them for doing so. There are a lot of local government associations in Queensland that are doing it very tough, and a lot of the sideline conversations that I had with other councillors brought that fact forward. So I really want to do, congratulate them and the work that other councillors are doing all across Queensland to keep their communities safe and together. Finally, finally, on a lighter note, I would, I would like to acknowledge two individuals in this chamber who were acknowledged at the LGAQ conference. Councillor Maddick and Councillor Cummings were both acknowledged during the dinner for their years of service to local government, and I would hope that we as a collective chamber would acknowledge the contributions that they've made towards Brisbane and share and congratulating both of them on their recognition of their long service. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Any further general business? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on two items tonight, the Iron Bumpin' Lagoon and Mosquito Sprang. The Iron Bumpin' Lagoon and its surrounding park is an amazing community space right in the heart of Sandgate, it's home to a number of local events, including the Iron Bumpin' Festival, the Sandgate Youth Festival, both of which attract thousands to the north side and many other events as well. It's a real hub for our community, while also being a great place to visit and enjoy. It also has a significant history well beyond European settlement as well. The area between the Iron Bumpin' Lagoon and what we now know as Dows Lagoon was home to the largest permanent Aboriginal camp in Brisbane's history. However, despite the popularity of the park and its history and the critical importance to local wildlife, it's been repeatedly overlooked by the Lord Mayor and this LMP administration when it comes to funding. After years of campaigning alongside the community, we secured funding for the rehabilitation plan, which was completed, but unfortunately, that was the end of the road for that project. It was thrown in the too-hard basket, which has happened time and time again. So as a result, locals have been left in limbo for years, while the Lord Mayor and, as our now self-styled city treasurer, fumbles hundreds of millions of dollars in blowouts on glitzy inner-city projects. I hate to think how many times over, this suburban project could have been funded if the metro blowout alone had been avoided. With structural issues and on With structural issues and ongoing environmental concerns, the lagoon needs genuine attention. This Lord Mayor and his administration can't continue to ignore suburban ratepayers. With the highest rates on record and long overdue local projects constantly on the backburner, residents are getting well and truly fed up. We deserve much better in the suburbs. On the issue of mosquito spraying, the plagues of mosquitoes that we're already seeing is not a new issue for people living on the north side of Brisbane. And I want to start by thanking the teams out in the field for the tireless work they do day in, day out. It is really appreciated right across the city and especially by us here in the chamber. Supporting these teams and the work they do should be a priority for the Lord Mayor and this administration, especially with the recent weather events we've seen over the last couple of years and warnings of increases in mosquito-borne diseases as well, with a number of experts now warning of a potential major outbreak of Japanese encephalitis this summer. Council can't be caught on the back foot, and proactive action has to be the answer. Extensive spraying, making sure our mosquito teams have everything they need, should be a priority. It's not just a public health and safety issue, of course, it's about us enjoying our backyards this summer. Locals are paying the highest rates on record, and it's not too much to expect, I think, that this administration provides the mosquito spraying teams with the resources, support and funding necessary to do this vital work in the suburbs.
Further speakers in general business? Councillor Strunk.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Listen, I rise to speak on one event that happened recently, and of course, it's the season where we have our, you know, the graduations and the awards nights, in some cases, the awards afternoons, and in some cases, in the morning. Anyways, one school I want to highlight is one of my secondary schools, Glenalla. And Glenalla has always achieved great things in regards to, you know, sports and arts and things like that. They're a very talented mob, and they were fairly good on the academic side as well. But over the last three years, I've seen a huge change in their academic achievements that they've done. Now, their awards night, I had the honour of presenting to the junior school some awards, academic awards on some subjects that I didn't know they even taught, but anyways, that's what it is in today's schools, they have a lot of options on subject matter. Anyways, I presented over 100, this is just to the junior schools, academic awards, and I was just blown away, because I remember before the pandemic, right, 2019, the awards then, that they, you know, there was a lot of awards, but nowhere near the number, especially in the junior school. And it's really because the, over the years, they've had some great leaders, principals and deputy principals, and the staff have really gotten behind. The academic side has markedly, has improved markedly over the last two or three years that I can see. And probably one of the best principals I had, in my time anyways, who achieved a lot with the school, and was Corinne MacMillan, who was principal there for about three years. And they achieved a lot of national awards as well. So Daniel Johnson is the new principal there, he's got some big shoes to fill because they've had, as I say, some really good leaders. But the awards night went off, the member for Oxy, of course, Milton Dick, the Speaker of the Australian Parliament, was there. And also, a welcome guest to present the award for Zonta was the former Lord Mayor, Sally Ann Atkinson. And, you know, she's getting on in years, but I'll tell you what, she's, the mind is great, right? She remembers me, well, I hadn't seen her for about three or four years, she remembered my name straight away, and I didn't have a tag or anything on. And now, she's, she really takes, she's actually engaged Glenalla for a number of years, and as I say, I used to run into her prior to the pandemic, of course, and have a bit of a chat, but she's also supported a lot of the other community groups out in my neck of the woods. And I just wanted to say thank you very much, because the recipient of the Zonta Award this year was really, really touched, and it was a pleasure to be, to see that. But I just wanted to commend Glenalla on the excellent work right across all the disciplines that they've been able to achieve over the last, probably the last 10 years since I started attending that school, through the great leadership. And I just think the school is growing and growing, it's well over 1,000 kids, it's getting to the point where it's actually going to be back to the numbers they used to have when there were six kids in the family. That's how much, that's how much the communities, not just in Glenalla but surrounding Glenalla, have really taken to what's actually happening in this school and want their kid to go there, in some cases outside of the Catchman area, but anyways. Thank you, Chair.
Any further speakers? Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise very briefly just to talk about our mosquito spraying programme and thank the council officers and all those involved in that programme and all the hard work they do. We obviously, as everybody knows, as I've mentioned, it's been talked about for the 10 years that I've been in this council, we employ two full-time entomologists who tell us when to spray and where to spray. Any equipment they need and require is given to them at the drop of a hat, they only have to ask and they receive, and I just want to, again, place on the record my congratulations for all the work they do. Thank you.
Any further speakers in general business? No further speakers. I declare the meeting closed.